Good evening. I call to order the West Jordan City Council meeting. Today is Wednesday, December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. All members of the council are present with exception to Councilmember Whitlock. She'll be joining us a little bit later on this evening via Zoom. We're joined by the council office staff, by Mayor Burton, various members of his staff, quite a few folks, quite a few members of the public, quite a few residents, and a few other special guests, among them, my mom. She is kind enough to come out for last council meeting as well as Councilmember Pax's mother. So with that, I'd like to turn the time over to Kay Hayden, Councilmember Pax's mother, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you would, please.
Wait, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. We have a number of special recognitions that we're going to have this evening. And to start with, we're going to turn a little bit of time over to, I believe, Chief Wallentine. Where did he disappear to? He can't hear this all so this quickly behind his back. But when you have the premier chief of police in the state, this is gonna happen. He's pulled multiple directions, but we'll turn a few minutes over to Chief Wallentine. I think, I think the microphone would be helpful, yes.
And you use it so well.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Now, oh, the button's already pushed. You learned from last time. Well, thank you for taking a few minutes out of your time tonight. I know that you've got a very busy schedule and a couple of busy public hearings. We are joined tonight by some of my former employees, and that's really kind of fun. People that I hired and are doing so well where they're former employees and former neighbors. This is just a great, it's a great thing. Sente, come on over here with me, brother. So we've got, we've got some special agents from the Office of the Attorney General. Sente, I'm gonna let you introduce them in just a minute. Sente is the, the section chief over the ICAC, the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, something we started years ago. When, when I was younger, had hair and was the chief at that agency and a bunch of guys that I've hired and just missed so much. So they're here tonight to honor one of our West Jordan police officers. As you know, we, we maximize our impact throughout the city of West Jordan by participating in a couple of very key task forces. One of those is the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, which allows us to be very effective in child predation work and protecting kids online and unfortunately arresting those who target kids online. And we've had a great partnership with the Attorney General's Office now for several years and are really excited to hear from Sente and his crew tonight. I'll turn the time over to you, Sente, to talk a little bit about the award and introduce your team.
Good evening, everyone. Excuse me. I don't, I don't mean to face my back towards you guys, but I, I'd like to, I'd like to kind of face everyone so you guys can all hear me. So I apologize for facing my back to you guys. Thank you, Chief, for the introduction. Again, my name is Sente Ally. I am one of the section chiefs at the Attorney General's Office. I'm also the commander for the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. The reason why I'm here is to, to honor one of our West Jordan affiliates for a job well done that he's, that he's been doing for, for several years for the task force. Just, just a little bit about ICAC. You guys probably, this, this, this name may be new to you guys, but I guarantee each, each and every one of you guys have seen an ICAC case in the media or you've read about one of our, one of our cases in the media. The, the mission of ICAC is very, very simple. We save kids, literally. That's all we do. We, we protect children from those who use the internet to exploit children. We value and we truly enjoy all the investigators throughout the state who are on this task force. Utah's, every state has an ICAC, every state. But in Utah, there's only one. Some of the bigger states like California or Texas or Florida, because of the size of their states, they have more than one ICAC. But here in Utah, it's just one. And we have seventy-five agencies strong that are a part of this task force, from Logan all the way down to St. George, from Moab all the way out to Granville. Seventy-five agencies strong and a hundred and seventy investigators who are all dedicated for this one common goal, for this one mission, to save kids. I'm here to congratulate and to recognize Detective Troy Strong as he shakes his head at me and is an annoyance because I'm recognizing him. But I, I want you guys to know how good of an investigator Detective Strong is. He's one of the leaders of the task force. He's one of the valued members and he's a very good friend to everyone. I'd like to also recognize some of my region supervisors who are here accompanying me. Supervisor Ecolo de los Santos and Supervisor Will Chow, along with my, my chief, my wife, Jordan, who's here to, to take pictures for us. But to talk about Troy and the work he's done, you guys have all seen his, his work in media, but Troy's name is not on those cases, which is, okay, that's fine. And I think Troy would, would, would be just fine with not having his name in the media on those cases. Troy arrested a restaurant manager who was exploiting several teenagers in the restaurant, and not just that restaurant, but other restaurants as well. Several months ago, Troy was a part of, he, he took lead of an investigation of someone who was downloading and sharing child pornography. Like normal, we execute the search warrant. And during that, during the service of the search warrant, we found that this offender was secretly filming his family in the bathroom, in their bedrooms. And Troy took lead on that. That offender was charged federally and stateside, and he's spending a good amount of time behind bars because of the work that Troy does. Our task force receives, oh, gosh, this year we're slated to, to, to receive almost six thousand reports from the National Center of Missing and Exploited Children. Seventy of those six thousand come right back here to West Jordan. Troy tells us every time, anything that comes back to West Jordan comes to me. Sure, it's your city. Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna send it right to you. But he takes pride in taking everything that comes back to his city because he doesn't want anyone else investigating the crimes in West Jordan. Troy is gonna take it. Troy's a damn good, excuse me, Troy's a very good investigator. I, 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 I'm sorry. Don't kick me out. I, I, I truly apologize for that. Troy's a very good investigator. I'm honored to call him my friend. I'm honored to know him both professionally and personally. And I just want to thank you, Troy, for the, the good work that you do, not only for the citizens of West Jordan, but for the children of Utah. On behalf of the Attorney General's Office, on behalf of the state of Utah, and on behalf of the Utah ICAC Task Force, I congratulate you. And I want, will? Ladies and gentlemen, if you guys would please join me in congratulating Detective Troy Strong for being the affiliate ICAC Investigator of the Year for the state of Utah.
Thank you, West Jordan. Merry Christmas and happy good night.
The mayor and council don't want to get left out of the photo opportunity, so council will, yeah.
So first one here, we got John Roberts. And John has been wanting and working really hard to get in this position for quite some time, and he's very qualified. And we finally got him to go in here. We get so many qualified people, it's impressive how many people we get. As you can see, he's, he's an appraiser for the Salt Lake County Assessor's Office, so he is familiar with land use on some, on some levels. And will get more familiar on other levels because there's a lot more land use than just the assessment of it. He also has some good education backgrounds that'll be helpful for him here. And he is here. And then, John, would you stand for just a moment? Thank you. That's great. Next, we have Emily. And Emily is here. I saw her. Emily, would you stand for just a second? Thank you. And when I interviewed Emily, I was quite impressed with her skills and her ability to communicate and understand what was happening. And as you can look at her background, you can see that she's going to be a real asset for our planning commission as well. And third is Thomas Hollinsworth. Could you change that side? Thank you. Tom, would you stand for just a moment? There, he's in the background. No, I came in. So Tom and I have known each other for a couple of years and probably through the, as you see, he's got some good backgrounds. And he's been around the block a couple of times and he'll bring some good expertise to our planning commission. So with these three, I'm real excited to have them here. And your chair of your committee on the mayor's appointments asked me a question about how we get the word out. Really, it's the same as, same answer as it's been every time we do it. Social media, word of mouth. I found in my, my own personal business, word of mouth is a great way to get things out. And we also do the website and it was also in our newsletters. But with your permission, council member, council chair McConaughey, could they each tell you how they heard about this and why they want to serve on this briefly? And let's go in the order we talked about them, so we'll start with John.
If you would, please come to the microphone.
Any questions at that time?
You'll need to hit the button on the right. The light should turn up red and you're good.
Perfect. All right. So I've known Councilman McConaughey for about ten years now. And about three years ago, we had an occasion for the mayor to come into our neighborhood. And so I made his acquaintance and started talking more with Councilman McConaughey, and he just kind of pointed me in this direction. And I've pursued it on and off for the last three years, and finally, here we are. So.
So word of mouth, right?
Yeah, your word of mouth through Councilman McConaughey.
Great. Counsel, do you have any questions? Thank you. And then let's go with the second one, which was Angela. Emily, thank you. I can't believe she changed her name.
Emily Gonzalez, I heard about this opportunity through the Community City Newsletter via email. And my career has helped me understand this position. And so I heard about it and applied, and here I am tonight.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for Emily? Can you ask her why she changed her name? Okay, now we'll go with Tom.
So about three years, I guess about three years ago, I started to converse with the mayor about the Highlands Improvement District and some of the issues that I was noticing there and worked with him to come to some resolutions to, to help that district out. In a recent meeting, just to meet the mayor, we, we were talking about the city, of course, and he had mentioned that he would like to, if anybody was interested in applying, to go ahead. And so I did. That's why I'm here.
Thank you. Any questions for Tom? Wonderful. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
So we, we market it in lots of different ways. We can see the word of mouth is probably the, the best source we have to do that. So all of you who are here, you're all invited to send in an application for planning commission. We'll hold on to them for our next opening. And we save all the old applications as well. And then when they, another opening comes back, we check to see if you're still interested. So we have a quite a stock of names on, on resource force. Thank you.
Would you like to introduce Mr. Wilson for Board of Adjustments while we're at it?
I would love to. Do you want to pull Mr. Wilson's slide up, please? Okay. Mr. Wilson, would you please stand? There he is. He is standing. Thank you. So he also wanted to be on the planning commission, but he's gonna be on the Board of Adjustments instead of this time. And it's possible he could change later at a later time. But maybe we'll just keep him there. Anyway, he is probably really happy to be here for the recognition that happened earlier because that's his kind of line of work as well. And I think he'll do a great job here. He's got some good backgrounds. It'll be available for that, too. And Michael, if you want to come up and then share with us how you learned about this opening that was available. Choose the right.
I, I think like everyone else, I first saw about it on social media and then the word of mouth encouraged me to participate. But the social media was the first opportunity I saw. That's actually how I've seen every board position I've been on, so.
That's right. And you probably recognize him from previous committees that he served on. Any questions for Michael? All right. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Look to see if there's any, anything to share from the Committee on Mayoral Appointments. Councilmember Pax, I believe you had that one.
Great. Thank you, Chair. Yes, after conferring with councilmembers Bloom and Jacob, who comprise the Mayoral Appointment Subcommittee, we're grateful for everyone who wants to step up and serve the community, grateful for the opportunity to collaborate with them. So we have no reservations with the proposed appointments. And thank you, Mayor, for the additional information. I always want to confer with you ahead of time and not throw out any last-minute questions. In conjunction with how the positions were advertised and how the four appointees were found, do you have any other statistics on how many respondents there were? How many interviews are, are senior staff involved in that selection at all at any time? Or, or do you just take care of that as the executive for the city?
I use Ariel to help me a great deal. Ariel gets with the, works with communications with Tony and others in communications to make sure that the word's getting out there in the newsletter and the Facebook pages and on other places as well. So he does that. He collects all of those. He does the first filtering of them to make sure they're meeting all the qualifications. And then he brings them all to me and we together sit down and review over them. And then we, as we review over them, then we select those that I am going to interview. I, and then I interview them personally. They come in and meet with me in my office. And then after the interviews, I make the final decision and he shares them with you after my interviews. And that's where you could hear about it. And how many? I, I don't remember. It was like, it was over a dozen. I can't tell you how many it was.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Careful, everyone, because once you're in, it's kind of like PTA. It's hard to get out. So I think the majority of city council members have served on Planning Commission or Board of Adjustment. I know for me, Board of Adjustment was ten years and Planning Commission was six years. So this might just be the start. So thank you for stepping up to serve.
And Ariel said it was fourteen, so now I do know how many.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. I will bring this back to the council for comments, discussion, or motion.
I have a, I have a question. Two of these, two of these nominees are serving a three-year term. One of them will be serving a two-year term for the remainder of Councilmember-elect Shelton. So who's, who's what in this?
Tom has the two-year term.
Tom has the two-year term. Okay. Thank you. Can I make, I'm gonna make a, can I make the motion that says, I move to approve Resolutions Number twenty-three dash zero seven three dash zero seven four dash zero seven five and zero seven six?
Second. Motion by Councilmember Green, second by Councilmember McConaughey. Any discussion to the motion? All right. Seeing none, let's vote. Miss Quick.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock?
Yes.
Councilmember Pax?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett? Chair McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bloom?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes, seven to zero.
Thank you. We want to take a quick moment and thank those who have expressed their willingness to serve. We have a signed copy of the resolution for each of you. If we could have you come up and then we do like to do a picture with the council and the group. All right. So those are the special recognitions we have. I do want to note, for those who, well, we're gonna move on to citizen comment, our public, our public comment portion. For those who are upstairs in the overflow, I understand we've got about forty to fifty folks that are up there. If you want to speak during citizen comment, we encourage you to come down, come down now. We do have a couple opportunities to speak. Public comment, the citizen comment period, you can speak about anything you'd like. Doesn't have to be anything on the agenda. And then later, we're going to have our public hearings. So if you're here for the public hearings, this would be to discuss water efficiency standards, the Copper Meadows proposal, or the Parker Place proposal. If you're here for any of those three public hearings, we'd encourage you to wait until that public hearing. That said, we know there's a lot of things going on. If you can't wait and you want to speak about that during citizen comment, you can. You just can't speak twice about the same topic. So with that, if there's anybody who would like to speak to the, oh, sorry, a couple other things about citizen comment. For those who are online, we don't take anonymous comments, so we do ask that you share your name. It looks like most everybody has their name out there. When you speak, we'll ask you again for your, your name for the record and your city of residence. And then you can have three minutes to speak on whatever topic you'd like. Again, whether on the agenda, off the agenda, anything you'd like, we're here to listen. We don't typically engage in back and forth during citizen comment. It's council listening time. We do ask that you try and help us maintain the decorum of the meeting by refraining from any, well, refraining from things that wouldn't be inappropriate in a public forum. And then with that, let's go ahead and open up citizen comment. Is there anybody who would like to address the council tonight? You can feel free to come up to the podium. I'm looking at Anne Marie because she's the caretaker of Bingham Creek Library here with us almost every council meeting and almost always has something to share. So we'll start public comments. Still, please share your name and city of residence.
Of course. I'm Anne Marie Barrett. I work at the Bingham Creek Library here in West Jordan, but I am a resident of Draper City, so.
We'll still claim you as our own.
Well, thank you. I did grow up here in West Jordan. Hopefully, that kind of counts a little bit. Uh well, thank you. I did grow up here in West Jordan. Hopefully that kind of counts a little bit. Uh I love the community here. It is so great to be part of your community and it is such a privilege to um interact with all of you in our libraries. So we are so lucky to have such a great and supportive community for our libraries. I just wanted to share a few exciting fun things coming up and welcome anybody to come enjoy these experiences at the Bingham Creek Library. We also have a lot of cool things happening at the West Jordan Library, so don't want to detract from them if they happen to be your closer library. They are a wonderful, wonderful library as well. We're sister libraries, so um both are great places. Tomorrow, we have a really great new program that we have been starting called Reading Buddies. This is where children who are learning to read or starting to get more comfortable reading. Um kind of early to mid elementary ages or tend to be the group, they can come in and read with a volunteer for fifteen minutes. Uh we're doing this tomorrow. It starts at three fifteen and runs to four fifteen. So we definitely welcome and love to have kids come in and read to read with a volunteer. It's a really wonderful, fun program um that helps kids get a little bit more comfortable with their reading. We also have a blood drive coming up this Friday. It will be from ten in the morning, right when we open our doors until three o'clock. We've still got some open slots. So um you can go to our uh calendar uh on our website and sign up there. This is a time of year where uh there is a desperate need for blood donors. So if you're available, we'd love to see you at the library. It's a really wonderful thing to be able to help out our blood banks. Um when there's such a big need. And then finally, um on Saturday, December thirtieth. From eleven to twelve o'clock, we're having our New Year's Eve party. Uh it's gonna be a dance party and it's tons of fun. We hope to see you all there. It is um a great time for families and kids and we know we're a day early with New Year's Eve, but um you know. We don't really have options seeing as we're closed on Sunday. So uh thank you all. We really appreciate being part of such a wonderful community.
Thank you. I forgot to mention, there are also quite a few folks who are joining us online on Zoom. Um si- similar to in person, you are able to participate in both citizen comment and the public hearing. If you are online and would like to speak during citizen comment, please hit the little button at the bottom to raise hand to indicate that you'd like to speak. We'll come back to the folks who are online after we've uh completed with the folks who are here and here in chambers. But that, who else would like to share their thoughts with the council this evening? It's an awfully full room to not have other thoughts. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody online. Nor anybody else making a move for the podium. So with that, we will close citizen comment and move on to reports to the council. After reports to the council, that's when we'll reach our public hearings. So. Uh we'll start with reports from other council members as to business that they've con- conducted over the last couple of weeks and need to share with the group. Councilmember Green.
I'm just, just two quick comments. One, uh thanks to the West Jordan Police Department. I get to, I I got to be on the other side of what it like, what it's like to have to file a report with the police department and they did a good job. Uh Chief, I I don't know, I don't remember the officer's name, but he did a good job. Pass that on. Um extremely professional, extremely sympathetic, and it was uh it was a good experience. And last but not least, uh thanks to Public Works, uh last Thursday was great. Thanks for letting me be there.
Any other council member reports? Okay, we'll look to Mr. Anderson for the council office's report.
I have nothing to report at this time. I'll uh I'll speak to you all a little later.
Takes an awfully good report to beat no report. With that, uh Mayor Burt.
I have an awfully good report.
Beautiful, let's hear it.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to ring the bell for the Salvation Army over at Smith's Marketplace. That was a lot of fun. Got some donations. If you haven't donated yet, you can still do it online. Feel free to do that. Our holiday for the animals is can gonna be on December, was December ninth. Hopefully you got to participate in that. Help our animals and the animal shelter have a great Christmas. We got food and blankets and treats and more. I got to Google, see the Five Carols for Christmas. And you're thinking, five carols, five Christmas carols? Well, no, those five girls you see up there, their name is Carol, and each one spells it differently. And it was a a great op- great show that the Sugar Factory Playhouse put on. The West Jordan Senior Holiday Meal happened on December twelfth, so they already had their holiday meal. They're good through the holiday. And I got to go and join them and have lunch with them. Joel P. Jensen had their holiday choir concert. And that was great, listening to those middle school kids. Share Christmas songs with us. And the West Jordan High School Orchestra Concert happened on December thirteenth, and I joined with them. Uh they were very good and was enjoyable listening to them as well. And then the Messiah sing-along, this is out of orders. No, it's not really. Messiah sing-along happened Sunday, and as you can see by the left picture on the left, it was a full house. It packed in there. They required tickets this time because they had standing room only last year. That worked out good. And the Copper Hills High School had their holiday choir concert. I got to go attend that. There's, that was a lot of fun, and you'll be seeing some of these people next Wednesday. And something I don't have a slide for was the Cookies with a Cop this last Saturday. It was a great turnout for that. Kids got to come and decorate cookies and have help from our police officers who probably never decorated cookies before. But the kids taught them well. Some things upcoming is our first Friday concert. Is still happening. This will be January fifth at the Brilliant. We hope that you will come and join us there. Our last one was uh fantastic, and I expect this one to be super fantastic. And just keep in mind, with Christmas being on Sunday, City Hall will be closed on Monday and Tuesday. And same thing, and City Office with New Year's Day being on the Monday, the following week, City Office will be closed then. And for all of you who ha- live in West Jordan, realize your trash will be picked up one day later, the next two weeks. That's my report. Thank you.
Any questions for the mayor, Councilmember Pack?
Great, thank you, Mayor. So I I received the report that there were forty-two new businesses that started in November. That's.
Isn't that fantastic?
Fantastic, and over one million dollars in drugs sniffed out by our canines in one month.
You know, our canines do a really good job, and the other jurisdictions know that. So we get opportunities to help other jurisdictions get those drugs off the streets. And we actually got called in, got to do some help, and maybe the police could do a better job on this. It's at the airport. And they suspected something, and the dogs went in, sniffed around a bunch of suitcases, already got turned in. And found two suitcases full of drugs. It was a big success.
Well, great, thank you. And then also engaging youngsters, Cookies with a Cop, saw those pictures. That was great. So to me, it's a testament of the importance of institutional knowledge, as we saw with the recent firefighter. Uh awards, over one thousand years worth of experience in the Fire Force.
It is, it's amazing. And let me mention to you, we brought up the fire department, because our fire department does such a fantastic job. Our residents have lower insurance on their on their house, on their homeowners insurance. Because our fire department does such a great job. So next time you realize how cheap your insurance is, well, surely not. How bad it could be, just realize it's because we have such a great fire department here.
Well, thank you. And those recent service awards, that's always a wonderful event each year to see our our experience. I think it is a testament to where you actually save money. When you retain good people.
That makes all the difference. Yes, it costs us to keep, it lets us to retrain.
Plus, it was nice seeing your impressive hat closet on the video, so. Thank you for your efforts in keeping morale high for employees and their families. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. My hat is off to you right now.
Thank you, Chair.
Not a question, but I'm gonna take a little bit of leeway. I note that uh former Councilmember Worthen is also joining us online. While citizen comment has closed, I'm sure she would uh be upset if I didn't take an opportunity to thank the mayor's office for the Christmas for the pets. That is something that's definitely Councilmember Worthen approved. Thank you on her behalf.
That's true. If she was still here, she would have been right in the middle of it.
Absolutely. All right, let's look to uh Mr. Lee for C A O's report.
Nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. With that, we will move on to our public hearings. Again, if you are upstairs in the overflow and would like to speak at one of the public hearings. Please make your way down to um that down to the community room. If you're online, as we get to each of these, as we get to each of these public hearings, please hit the hand icon to indicate if you'd like to speak. You'll have a moment or two to get here because we have one uh public hearing item that's relatively straightforward. This is ordinance twenty-three dash forty-four. That deals with water efficiency standards that make some minor modifications that allow us to keep our rate structure without having to pay a penalty rate. Uh Mr. Anderson, could you speak to this?
Yeah, very quickly, uh council, um you're, it was reported to you about six weeks ago. That uh the the city had received an audit from the Division of Water Resources with the state of Utah. And that the ordinance that you adopted back in twenty twenty-one, while it met most of the requirements of of. What the state wants for uh water efficiency, it didn't meet all of them. And so they uh gave us an audit finding that we needed to fix a couple of things. You provided the staff direction uh to go through the process and bring that back to you, which is what we're doing tonight. What this does uh for the folks that are here, this is just for going forward. It does not affect existing homes, just homes going forward. The state has a rule, administration administrative rule R six five three dash eleven. Uh which has some specifications on how much turf you can put on front and side yards. Um so we've corrected that, and it's also a part of Jordan Valley Water Conservation District's uh landscape. A water efficiency landscape standards. So it's basically um a minimum, the greater of two options. Either two hundred and fifty square feet of sod or three hundred or thirty-five percent of your landscape area, the front and the side yard. If we don't pass, if the council doesn't pass, there's some of the consequences would be the city, the citizens of West Jordan would not be eligible to receive. Uh rebates from Central Utah and Jordan Valley Water Conservancy. It also impacts our ability to negotiate uh water rates. So the recommendation of staff is that uh you adopt this order. It did uh it did have a positive recommendation with the planning commission.
Any questions for Mr. Anderson before we open the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody who would like to speak about water rates now is your opportunity to do so. If you're here, or sorry, not water rates, the uh, sorry, autopilot, water efficiency standards. We've had the water rate conversation how many times in the twelve years I've been here? Um just kind of comes. Yeah, once per month for the last twelve years. Uh no, water efficiency standards. If you'd like to address the council, please hit the button to raise hand. If you're online or if you're here in chambers, please come to the microphone. I don't see anybody making a motion for the podium. I don't see any hands raised online. Also, just worth noting that we don't have anybody called in by telephone only. Um everybody's logged into the actual Zoom, so. With that, I'll close the public hearing and return to the council for discussion and or motion. Councilmember Green.
I'm going to move to approve ordinance number twenty-three forty-four. Cindy, with the rest of the wording, just like on the screen. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Green, second by Councilmember Bennett. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing none, Cindy, let's vote.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Yes.
Chair McConaughey.
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett.
Aye.
Councilmember Pack.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bloom.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion passes, seven to zero.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to public hearing uh regarding ordinance twenty-three dash forty-five. This is the uh proposal for Copper Meadows. Again, if you're upstairs and would like to speak to this one, you've got a moment or two to make it to the. Um community room here on the main floor. We will start hearing a little bit of background. And Taylor, are you going to introduce this one to us? There you are. So Taylor, I assume we'll hear from you for a moment or two, and then we'll hear from the applicant, and then we will open the public hearing.
Great, thank you, Chair. Um as mentioned, this is a proposal, it's actually uh looking at three different motions. It's for a. General Plan Amendment, Rezone, and the Master Development Plan.
Yeah, I I I know you're a little bit taller than us, but if you could stay close to the microphone, especially for the folks who are watching upstairs.
Okay, yeah, sorry about that. Uh so as mentioned, this is for Rezone, a Futureland Use Map Amendment. And the Master Development Plan Agreement for Copper Meadows. It's about uh seventy-six acres within the city. And another three outside of the city, which would be annexed into the future date, located on the west uh side of the city. Oops, going the wrong direction. I'll I'll go into this more maybe after the applicant speaks. If you have any question, give them a chance to speak. But we did take this to Planning Commission on December sixth. Uh we reviewed all of these proposals and we had uh quite a long discussion. Uh I think we had. Uh citizens group that came, they had a lot of comments as well. And at the end of the meeting, the Planning Commission made a recommendation. For denial. Um for all three of the motions, they were all five to zero votes. We had two commissioners absent. I'll I'll give the applicant a chance to come up and talk, and if you want me to kind of go through why we got those findings, I'm happy to do that, but the staff report includes everything. Unless you want me to go through that in detail right now.
No, the the staff report was included online, had everything for everybody to read in advance. If there are specific questions, we'll give the council an opportunity to ask. Ask those of you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll give the op- the the applicant an opportunity to speak.
Uh fantastic. Uh my name is Jeff Seaman. I represent Peterson Development Company, uh Salt Lake City. Uh two two five south, two hundred east. So uh yes, um this has been a long time coming. As Taylor said, really, this application.
If if you could just say.
Okay, uh really, this application is for for four things. One, we have the annex. Um one, we have uh few amend future land use map and uh the uh rezone as a PC. And the fourth thing is a master development agreement. In the first three items, um we are in agreement with staff. That yes, uh this three acres should be annexed into the city as part of this um. This development, uh yes, uh PC is appropriate and changing the future land use to low density is appropriate in these areas. Um where we have come up against, uh we're still working through some of those issues is in the M D A. Um whether it's uh miscommunication between our group and and staff. Um we that M D A did not get finalized, and there's a number of deal points, as you saw, that that are in the process of being worked through. Many of those um and essentially without it, you cannot approve this project or or our requests. So without that M D A, we're kind of stuck. So um. And uh so what we are asking for tonight is a continuance. Um the public notice already got, or the public was already noticed that this was happening. So we're here, we're showing up, we're saying, okay. Give us uh till the end of January, beginning of February to work with staff to work out these deal points. Um like I said, on three of the four issues, we're there. On the majority of the the um items on the fourth issue. They're they're bullet points that we're working through with our team, and we're we're not that far away. So um the reason we have been pushing. For this is because this process started back in March of twenty twenty-two. And we worked with many of you. We've had many conversations with you um discussing the particulars, and you know the details of it. Um we wanted, and staff knew this, and we've always had the goal of bringing this project before this council. Because this council is aware of the details, um the interest intricacies and nuance of this project. So um that is the purpose behind us pushing um to to get to this point. And um as from speaking on behalf of Peterson Development. The relationships and the conversations we've had with uh the departing council members has always been fair. Um you haven't given us everything with which we want, but you've been fair, and we wanted to bring this to you so that you can make a make a decision on it. So but unfortunately, that is not going to be the case. We asked for a continuance, uh not a no or a yes vote right now. But we'll punt until the end of January, uh beginning of February. So do you have any specific questions for me?
All right, we'll look for questions from the council. We'll try and hold off on thoughts and opinions and stick to questions until after the public hearing. But questions, uh Councilmember Green.
So I'm gonna put you on the spot, Jeff.
Yeah.
If the planning commit, if the staff gave a no neck or no recommendation, and the planning commission did a no recommendation. Why push this to the council when the the requirement is that we have to have an M D A signed? And you don't have an M, and there's no M D A, and in fact, you don't even have on the uh the way I understand it. There are multiple property owners that we don't even have their signatures yet. Why even say push to be have? Why even say push to be, have this on the agenda if it wasn't ready?
Um, and that would go back to a miscommunication, miscommunication between our group and staff. Um, we were not entirely aware of the fact that an MDA needed to be signed. We knew that one was going to accompany this uh, proposal, but, um, uh, details, holidays, schedules, mixing up, that's kind of where we are.
All right, any other questions for the applicants? All right.
Thank you. We, we can come back and answer any other questions later after, right?
Should, should there be some? Okay, with that, um, I might exercise a little personal privilege since it's my last council meeting here, my family is here and one of my little boys looks like he might need some cuddles. So if I get joined by the little six-year-old, that's why. Um, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Again, if you'd like to speak on this item, if you're online, hit the button to raise hand. We're going to start with the folks who are here in person first. Um, with that, just out of curiosity, can I see a raise of hands? How many are anticipating speaking on this topic? Beautiful. Uh, we'll just start on this side and kind of work our way back and then work our way forward on the other side. Um, but yeah, please feel free to come up to the podium. Um, you can have, if you're speaking for yourself, up to three minutes per person. Again, we'd ask that you start with, uh, your name and then city of residence. Um, we do want to be careful about blocking walkways. So if there's like a specific order, folks, we, we want to try to avoid having any more than three-ish or four people in line at a time. Uh, we want to make sure staff can see everything. We want to make sure as you guys are sharing thoughts, staff has a good opportunity to take any notes that may, that may, uh, need to be taken. So with that, please, uh, start with your name, city of residence and then three minutes.
Jake McNinch, uh, good evening, city council. Thank you for your time tonight. Uh, we appreciate you and the concern you have for our city. We also thank the, uh, planning commission and the countless hours Taylor and the staff has spent diving into this proposal. We appreciate them and the planning commission recommending a unanimous denial of this proposal. Their decision was based off of city code and factual evidence. This proposal has many and significant infrastructure issues and goes against several city codes and several of the guiding principles found in the West Jordan, uh, city general plan. We ask today that each of you vote no to this proposal and follow the unanimous commission recommendation of denial. We, the people, would like our voice heard. If they are not, we, the people, have been supplied with application for referendum as the council would be acting in legislative action for a land use zone designation. We have been advised of the requirement of eight thousand forty-five holographic signatures. Today, I would like to hand deliver a petition in opposition to the Copper Meadows development by Peterson Homes. This petition has five hundred and eighty-eight constituents from West Jordan against the development. We feel that it would adversely affect the surrounding neighborhoods and that it is not compatible with the established existing neighborhoods. You can find details of the petition on page number two. Please allow the people to present their factual evidence in opposition to this proposal. Thank you.
Anything that you have to share, uh, any hard copy can be provided to Mister Hallmark. Thank you.
My name is Rich Willey. All right, I, I want to highlight some, um, couple of issues that, that, that have come up. Tonight Peterson Development requested a, a continuance, uh, and they, they stated that without this continuance that, uh, their, their proposal would be rejected. Uh, I want to highlight some procedural, uh, irregularities that have deeply concerned the citizens of, of, of West Jordan here. Uh, last night, uh, Mister Zach Jacobs posted to Facebook, he said Peterson Development has asked for a continuation. In all likelihood, this means that there will be no vote on approval or denial of Copper Meadows. Uh, this created significant confusion, uh, amongst the, the, this, the, the citizens in, in, in our neighborhood. Um, today, earlier, uh, Scott Hardy asked, uh, Zach Jacob, so to be clear, it does not require the residents to show up tonight. Uh, the council will simply issue a no vote and continue to a later date. Uh, Zach Jacob, uh, then replied, uh, that's what will happen. Yes, residents who do show up will be allowed to speak, but that is mostly pointless because it's going to go back to the drawing board. Uh, so from what it appears, uh, to us, i- is that Mister Jacobs has, has already conducted a vote, already polled the members of the, uh, of, of the city council and, and, and done this. Uh, this is, this is a problem for, for several reasons. Under the Open and Public Meeting Act, all communications like this need to be above board and recorded. Um, obviously, these, whatever, uh, whatever compelled him to, to state this and, uh, wa- was, was not publicly recorded. Uh, secondly, uh, the, the public subdivision Ethics Commission provides several, uh, pro- pro- provides a, uh, several different, uh, standards, uh, that, that city council members are, are supposed to, uh, abide by. Um, among those is, is conflicts of interest. Uh, in, in this case, um, Mister Jacobs is, is taking significant political contrib- contributions from Peterson Development. Uh, he's gone out of his way to discourage members of the public from attending this meeting. Uh, and, and in, in by all accounts, it appears that he has a conflict of interest in this matter. Uh, for that reason, uh, I do not think that you can vote to continue this matter tonight. Uh, just for all these, uh, procedural, uh, problems. Uh, I'd like to highlight that Peterson De- Development is a sophisticated party. Uh, they knew what they were doing in this, throughout this whole process and.
Th- thank you. That is time, right?
Hello, my name is Sean Fielding, West Jordan resident. Uh, before we begin to voice our opinion tonight, we would like to address two items. First, the motion of continuance or remanding that has been asked by the developer. We, the people, are highly opposed to this motion and recommend the city vote no to this motion. We, the people, feel that code thirteen dash five dash four in regards to newly annexed territories need to be enforced with this proposal. This is in itself a timely ordeal. We feel that the council voting no to continuance and this proposal, the developer will not be rushed to get the proposal submitted once again. Code thirteen dash seven C dash nine explains that if the developer would like to substantially change the application, then no amendment shall be submitted within one year from the date of denial. We, the people, believe, or we, the people, feel this development merits substantial change and would like this proposal to be voted tonight. If the developer would like to address the several issues within this development by recommending a different zoning type and a proposal that meets criteria in code thirteen dash seven D dash six, then we, the people, feel that denial of this application is appropriate. Granting a continuance would allow the developer to rush another application to the city, which, as we have seen over the past few months, did not work well. Peterson had a, at a dead, excuse me. Peterson had a deadline with Jones Estate LLC on December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. They were trying hard to meet this deadline but did not make it. Perhaps the council can help mitigate pressure of deadlines such as these by voting no to the continuance and no to this proposal. This would allow Peterson a much more achievable deadline of December twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Please vote no to this continuance or remanding and no to this proposal if those are presented tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Katie Fielding, West Jordan resident of twenty-plus years. The second item we would like to address is the situation in which we find ourselves with the community and the council find ourselves in a situation which we should not be in. In any transaction, there should be a negotiation and typically legally binding arrangement between parties as to a course of action. The MDA has revised, as revised since the planning commission meeting, has not been signed by Peterson or Jones Mountain Estates LLC. Why are we taking action on an item that both parties have not agreed to? Why is this development being allowed to come before the city council? It is not ready and needs substantial change and sufficient agreements. Please vote no to postponement and no to this proposal and set a precedence to developers in West Jordan that they need to come prepared with an application that is complete. We also can learn from the situation that perhaps the application for developers in West Jordan needs to be revised. Normally, all the deal points for a master development agreement are agreed upon before an MDA is drafted and finalized. For this development, city staff was not able to agree with Peterson Development regarding many of the deal points. The city has utilized an MDA template for this development that was used with a recent Peterson Development project named Vias at, or Villas at Stone Creek. Peterson Development drafted and desired to use a new version of the MDA with an entirely new format and with provisions that are unacceptable to the city. Please take this into consideration and vote no to postponement and this proposal. Thank you.
I'm Brian Jones. I'm a West Jordan resident. There are two parts to code thirteen five C, thirteen dash five C dash five. First, the development has to have two hundred undeveloped acres to be zoned planned community. Copper Meadows is only seventy-six acres. I think we can gr- agree that this is indirect violation to this part of the code. The second part refers to the city council approving this. If they determine the surrounding neighborhood will not be adversely affected by granting this zone. Let me, let me remind you that you have just received a packet with five hundred and eighty-eight signatures from the people that surround this development explicitly saying that this will adversely affect the surroundings neighborhoods. We will now prove with facts why this will adversely affect our community and neighborhood and why a rezone to PC is not appropriate.
I'm Colette Farr. I'm a West Jordan resident. Actually, this probably should have come just before he talked. This is just kind of outlining what thirteen dash five C dash five states. It says the minimum size for a planned community zone shall be two hundred undeveloped acres, except that the city council may approve a resume request to the planned community zone classification for a parcel smaller than two hundred acres if the city council, in its sole discretion, determines that the surrounding neighborhood will not be adversely affected by the granting of such zone classification and that the provisions of this article will be complied with. And we'll go ahead and continue with that. But I just want to make a personal comment about rezoning. We, um, moved here about six years ago. I've been a resident of West Jordan for almost thirty years. We moved to the Sycamores neighborhood because we wanted space. We wanted to get away from the congestion of higher density. And a lot of the members of our neighborhood have moved for the same reason. I've talked to members of communities that are included with townhouses and cottage houses and they desperately want to get out of them and have a place to go where they have space. If this is allowed to be rezoned, where are they going to go? You will be forcing them to other cities or other places, thereby taking those higher income foundational families away from us, Jordan. Thanks.
Hello, Travis Montague, uh, resident of West Jordan. The Copper Meadows development as proposed simply is not compatible with Jordan Hills neighborhood or Upper Sycamores. Your staff reported, reviewed the thirty-one point seven acres of the Sycamores that are directly to the north and adjacent to this proposal. They found in this area that there are seventy-one dwelling units with a density of two point two four dwelling units per acre compared to the four point nine being proposed. Peterson repeatedly said that four point nine falls under the low density designation. However, that phrase means something very different for when you look at it like this. The average, excuse me, the average lot in this upper sycamore is point three five acres, fifteen thousand forty square feet compared to the largest lot on Peterson proposed being point eighteen acres or about eight thousand square feet. We are asking you to trust your own staff and the report that they provided, which shows this proposal is not compatible with existing neighborhoods. Thank you.
Hi all, Josh Sikoski, West Jordan resident. We also ask you to consider that the Jordan Hills neighborhood in fact has much larger lots and follows a traditional pattern of development within West Jordan that places larger lots along the west boundary. And as we have learned from the staff report, you all have heard from a large number of residents in the neighborhood that feel this proposal will have a negative impact on their neighborhood. You also have a petition signed by five hundred and eighty-eight constituents of West Jordan that agree this will adversely impact, impact the surrounding neighbors. We ask that the developer take the recommendation of the West Jordan City Planning Commission and rethink the development utilizing density and built environment types similar to the Sycamores north of the gravel pit.
Thank you, Josh, and thank you for your prior service on the planning commission. Good to see you again.
Thanks, Kirsten Erickson. I'm a resident of West Jordan. Um, Copper Meadows is also not compatible with Hyde Point neighborhood, which lies directly, it directly buffers to the east. West Jordan staff report did not include this data. However, we would like to present the facts to prove that Copper Meadows is not compatible to Hyde Point. Hyde Point neighborhood is made up of a hundred and seventy-two dwelling units with a density of three point one two homes per acre with lots ranging from point one eight acres to point four one acres with an average lot size of point two two acres. Copper Meadows is proposing four point nine dwelling units per acre, which would not be compatible with Hyde Point in dwelling units per acre or average lot size. We would like to ask that you agree with the analysis, which should make this not compatible with the land to the east. Thank you.
Mandy Hamburg, West Jordan. Copper Meadows is not compatible with what Jones Ranch is proposing along the Ochre Mountains. Please let us use facts found in the Jones Ranch Master Development Plan and your staff report. Jones Ranch, which buffers on the south side directly adjacent to the project, allows for between one point five and two point nine dwellings units per acre. Villages eleven, twelve, thirteen and fourteen, as you directly allow no more than three units per acre. As defined here, Jones Ranch would have no more than three dwellings units per acre. That type of housing with the three units per acre would buffer the Ochre Mountains heading north from ninety to south until you get to the Copper Meadows development, which is proposing five units per acre that buffers the mountains. This is twice as dense and is not compatible with what the Jones Ranch is proposing. If Ivory were to develop this land, wouldn't you think that they would match what they have done all the way from ninety to south up against the Ochre Mountains? Why is Pearson Homes not being held to the same standard as Ivory has set? We ask that the proposal require housing up against the mountains to be, uh, one to three units as defined in the Jones Ranch plan. We now conclude that Copper Meadows is not compatible with Jordan Hills to the north, Hyde Point to the east and Jones Ranch to the south. Using only factual data, we ask that you uphold city code thirteen dash five C dash five and vote no to a PC zone.
Good evening. My name is Christian Crook. I'm a longtime resident of West Jordan. I live out here and I'm, I'm concerned. Um, so while you can't begrudge a company for trying to optimize the, the profits on the land that they have, in my opinion, it's, it's too many, um, and too much, especially for that area and the, the traffic, uh, among other things. We, my wife and I have four kids and we've lived out there. They've lived out there the, the whole time that they've been alive. So they're proposing to rezone this to the, um, planned community zone um, from, I can't remember if it's low, whatever it is now. Um, but the code thirteen dash five D dash, dash one B defines the purpose of a PC zone as a zone that will facilitate a mixture of uses with housing types. Um, and should in, include a, uh, a mix of residential and commercial. So how many commercial buildings are proposed within the seventy-six acres? There is zero. How many institutional buildings are proposed? Zero. How many different housing types are there other than residential housing types proposed? There are zero. So they're, they're, um, they're asking to rezone as a PC when in reality what they should, they're posing is for it to be zoned as, as residential. Um, and I prefer that we vote no on this at this time and stick with the plan as is. Um, and have a, a community and a development that better fits the people out there. Thank you.
My name is Jared Hodgkin. I'm a resident of West Jordan and a, um, a member of the Hyde Point, um, HOA board. The topography of the proposed land is not in harmony with twenty percent open space requirement. That shall be less than thirty percent, uh, in a PC zone. Please let me expound city code thirteen five C six. State slopes greater than thirty percent shall not be included in computations of, uh, permanent open space and that all open space is required to be usable open space. In the, in the MDP, it shows on the grade map that the developer will leave, leave us mostly twenty to thirty percent grades for the open space requirement. In fact, they specifically state they will take off dirt to meet less than, uh, thirty percent grade requirements. This does not benefit the community in any way as it is not usable. uh, thirty percent grade requirements. This does not benefit the community in any way as it is not usable or functional land. Also, it should not be allowed to compute open space in the manner which they have shown. It also goes against the guiding principles of preserving the hills of the Ocker Mountains. Please accept the factual information that thirty percent grade are not usable or functional or allowed to be computational. We also ask the city council to take the advice of staff and the planning commission. Taylor explicitly stated that, uh, the Taylor is on the staff. He spoke earlier. Um, Taylor explicitly stated that they have a very big concern that the uh, achievement of twenty percent open land space cannot be achieved with less than thirty percent grades in this particular area. A zone uh, such as one found on the land map use would be more appropriate as it would not require twenty percent open space with grades less than thirty percent. We therefore conclude that the PC zone would not be appropriate for the specific specified land. We ask the city council to uphold code one three five C six. And please vote no specifically to the PC zone as the topography of the land is not in harmony with the open space requirement.
Good evening. My name is Greg Kitchen. I'm a resident of West Jordan. The requirement of open space within the PC zone is forcing developer to annex land on the western border. As you can see on page twenty-three of one fifty-seven in the MDP under open space, all of this annexed land would sit behind a vinyl fence and sit on a railroad track. This is not usable, accessible, or functional. Railroad tracks are not functional or usable for uh, this acreage. We ask the council to agree with our assessment. This should not be allowed to be computed as described in the developer's MDP according to code thirteen dash five C dash six, nor should it be allowed to count towards open space as it is not usable. It also should be realized that the PC zone chosen is requiring this annexation. Please consider these facts and vote no to a rezone to a PC zone as the natural topography of the land can't appropriately meet the requirements of this zone in grades or usability. A zone such as residential which currently exists in the land map use would be more appropriate as it would not require the twenty percent open space or the annexation of unusable land. It would also be more compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods and have a less adverse impact on them. We ask the city council to uphold city code thirteen dash five C dash six and please vote no specifically to the PC zone to mitigate annexation of unusable land that will be used solely to benefit the developer in meeting a requirement for a zone that is not appropriate. Thank you.
Brian Warner, West Jordan. The requirements of twenty percent open space where the PC zone is in fact leaving very little land for the developer to build on. Yet another reason for the PC zone is not appropriate. Please accept the following factual data points. Twenty percent of seventy-six acres is sixty acres. Three hundred sixty-seven dwelling units divided by sixty acres is six point one one dwellage per acre. Take out the annexation of the unusable land and this proposal becomes high density at seven dwellage per acre. This is not why the develop, this is why this development will not feel like a normal low-density neighborhood in, in West Jordan. Perhaps as Jay Thompson Thomas stated in our planning commission meeting code thirteen dash five C dash five and the regulation not designate land under two hundred acres as a PC zone was to avoid this exact thing cramming too many people in too small space. We ask the city council tonight to see the proposal for what it is, what it really is. Seventy-six acres that should not be designated as a PC zone. We ask that you realize that after fulfilling the open space requirement of the PC zone, it will not leave, it will leave no space for homes to be, to be built because the acres is less than two hundred. We ask that you vote no to this proposal and the designation of a PC zone. It is not appropriate for the use of this land. We now conclude our argument that the PC zone designation is not right for this land. We ask you, we ask that you accept our factual data that shows that why the PC zone applied to this specific land will adversely affect our neighborhoods. The unusable open space, inaccessible land being annexed, the density forced by the twenty percent open space requirement and the developer's utilization to fulfill the proposed PC zone is flawed. With this, we conclude our factual argument that the PC zone is appro, is not appropriate because it does not meet code thirteen dash five dash four, thirteen dash five C dash five, thirteen dash five C dash six, and thirteen dash five C dash one. Then I also like to state that twenty years ago, we did move into the Sycamores development. In that, in that time, the planning commission and the city council approved lots where car, trucks cannot properly park in their driveways. They current, they block the city and we know the city officials have tried to let a ticket trucks in a park where they stated, well, please show me how you can approve a parking lot yet ticket me for what you have approved for me to use. And based off of that, many people now are actually parking in the belt, in, in the streets. I don't even know how you guys are clearing the sidewalk, the, the area there. Based off of that, we actually moved to the newer Ivory development just to the south of this where we have more open space where people are not parking on it. We can actually park trucks in our driveways and be useful and we, and I, I ask that you take this into consideration. Thank you.
Trent Thacker, West Jordan city residence since the day I was born. The general land use map currently shows twenty-three acres as a park, twenty-two acres is lower residential and another twenty-three acres is very low residential. The general plan use, the general plan defines very low density as characteristics of land in this category range from large acreages of lands still in agricultural production to very large single-family residential lots, such as they will allow horses and other farms to be kept. Very low residential uses are appropriate as a buffer between higher-density single-family developments and dedicated open lands and, or hillsides and sensitive slopes. Perhaps in that definition, we can understand why the land is zoned as this way. Much of this land has many sensitive slopes from the gravel pit. Uh, said densities such as what the Copper Meadows is proposing does not fit into the very low residential category as defined by West Jordan. We the people conclude from this factual information that Copper Meadows is not compatible with the general land use plan. And we are asking for, and are asking for an unreasonable uh, land use map change going to, from very low residential to basically medium to the upper end of medium density. In our opinion, is asking for too much change to the current land use map. We ask that you vote no to the proposed change.
Brian Thatcher, West Jordan residents. Uh, please allow me to remind you that the West Jordan land use map was adopted and updated this year. In fact, just a few months ago, the residents from all of West Jordan city sta, city staff and several people spent many hours giving input and getting this just right. If the residents disagreed with the proposed current zoning or plan of this land, this would have been voiced when the land map was just being amended. While the general plan is a living document, it was completed and adopted. We, we would like to propose a question. What is the purpose of this general land map use if we're not going to really honor it? Just because there is no plan right now to develop the land map as portrayed doesn't mean in the future it won't be. The people designated this land to its current zone because the definition of residential matches the topograph of the other land. We asked the city council to uphold a recently adopted general land use map and plan to vote no to the proposed land map and use it to change it as it's not compatible. Uh, please allow us to prove, to prove the proposed amendment amendment does not constitute an overall improvement to the adopted land, general land use map, and it will solely benefit the developer. As we have discussed, the community will not benefit from the open land space left because of it's not functional aesthetically pleasing hills with twenty to thirty percent grade with noxious weeds being mowed twice a year. Will become a garbage collection site, a fire hazard, and the community, community will not benefit from the developer's proposal which suggests that we pay for the upgrades needed for the sewer line, the water tank in zone seven with our tax money. The community will also not benefit from this proposal as one, it will, we will not meet the short-term demand for houses and affordability. Two, it will increase fifty-six traffic visits to three thousand traffic visits. And three, it will create unsustainable and nightmarish parking problems. We will discuss all these items in further detail at a later time tonight. The community will not benefit list. It is several pages long, precisely ten, and due to time constraints, we will not go through these at this time. We can conclude however, with the facts stated above, the proposed land, the proposed amendment will not constitute an overall improvement to the general land use map. It will solely benefit the developer. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle Christensen from Sandy. I'm here to support my son-in-law Jake McNinch. I've been following this since the inception and we're all in this together. We will now prove with facts that the Copper Meadows development is not in harmony with many guideline guiding principles found in the West Jordan City General Guiding Plan. Please let us begin by reminding you of the guiding principles in the West Jordan General Plan that apply to this project. Land use decisions should be guided by the general plan to protect existing land uses and minimize impacts to existing neighborhoods. The general plan is the will of the community and presumed correct. Place high-density house projects near infrastructure which exists to sustain the increased density. Protect, preserve, and restore hillsides, ridge lines, and foothills of the Ocker Mountains and along the Jordan River. On page seven of one sixty-seven of Peterson's home MDP, it says, "We are proposing to relocate soil from the same site to fill the quarry to a developable and safe compaction level and slope." In discussions with staff, the applicant has indicated that they will do this by removing material from the natural hillside in the northwest corner of the project. It is the opinion of staff that this proposal goes against the spirit of the objective, which is to preserve, restore hillsides, ridge lines, and foothills of the Ocker Mountains. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Shaw McNinch and I'm a citizen of West Jordan, been a citizen for over twenty-some-odd years, so. Um, I do have real deep concerns about this. A lot on a personal level just because I, I know some history, so. But I'm gonna, I, I am gonna talk about um, Copper Meadows and the infrastructure-related issues that they have in their proposal. And we'll talk with facts. Uh, West Jordan city code fifteen three one states that the termination of required applications for a general plan land use map or general plan text amendment should follow procedures outlined in title thirteen, chapter seven, article C of this code and shall be followed. It also states that if the rezoning of property, a zoning map amendment or a text amendment of city ordinances is proposed, then the procedures outlined in title thirteen, chapter seven, article D of this code shall be followed. Title thirteen, chapter seven, articles C and D state that the purpose of the adequate public facilities management system is to establish an ongoing mechanism which ensures that public facilities and services need to, needed to support development are available concurrently with the impacts of such development. It continues and states that for water and wastewater facilities at a minimum, the city shall require that at the time of issuance of any building permit issued pursuant to a site-specific development plan, all necessary facilities and services as described in subsections thirteen, seven, seven A, three A, and three B of this article are in place and available to serve the new development in accordance with the approved utility plan or development agreement for the development. The developer's proposal is going to require a zone seven water tank to be built and a twenty-one inch sewer line in place. And also, it has not addressed storm drainage. The applicant is not following title thirteen, chapter seven in, in many capacities, which we will discuss in further detail. Thank you.
Hello, Ross Wilcox, West Jordan resident. Um, the current future land use map anticipates a relatively low number of units for this property. As a result, current utility master plans and infrastructure have not been sized to service the number of units proposed in this development or the proposed amended future land use map. The total number of equivalent residential units allocated to the Copper Meadows property is one hundred and twenty-three. It is important to understand that the number of equivalent residential units available to a project does not necessarily mean there's a utility capacity for that many residential units as open space and non-residential uses also utilize utility capacity and the number of equivalent residential units that a given unit needs also varies based on the size of the lot, home, and type of development. Copper Meadows is proposing three hundred and eighty-one ERUs, equivalent residential units. This is three times the amount anticipated by the city. Focus Engineering states the sewer pipe needs to be updated to twenty-one, twenty-one inch pipe for adequate drainage. They are proposing that the taxpayer pay for this. This should be paid for by the developer if he wants to develop the land, not the people that oppose it. Please also remember that code thirteen dash seven A dash five states that two, states that for storm drainage facilities, water and wastewater facilities at a minimum, the city shall require that at the time of issuance of any building permit issued pursuant to a site-specific development plan, all necessary facilities and services as described in the subsections are in place and available to serve the new development. Thanks.
Michelle McNinch, uh, West Jordan resident. Copper Meadows is proposing outlandish setbacks. The following are all in contrary to West Jordan's normal standard planned community setbacks found in code thirteen dash five C dash five. The standard setback in a PC zone in West Jordan is twenty-two feet for the front yard. Copper Meadows is proposing ten feet for a single cluster and a twelve for an alley-loaded townhome. The standard setback in a PC home in West Jordan is twenty-two feet for the rear yard. Copper Meadows is proposing three feet on a single cluster home, three feet. And on townhomes, five feet rear yard setbacks. This wouldn't even allow for culinary main lines or sanitary sewer lines to be located in the alleyways. The standard setbacks in a PC zone in West Jordan is fifteen feet on a corner side setback. Copper Meadows is proposing five feet on single clusters. Please do not allow the developer to change setbacks so they can fit more homes. Standard setbacks are in place for a reason. The city code that states PC zones are for two hundred undeveloped acres is also in place for a reason. The development is proposing to break city code and change setbacks. Please do not allow this. Also, the traffic study done by the developer states the traffic will increase from fifty-six visits to over three thousand. They are saying that there will be very little impact. There is one way in and one way out to US one eleven. When you go from fifty-six to three thousand, you can't tell me there isn't going to be significant impact on traffic. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I can tell you that there will be significant impact to traffic. Thank you.
My name is Brett Christensen. I am Jake McNinch's father-in-law from Sandy. We will conclude our opposition by responding to comments made by the developer and presenting several flaws to his proposal. The developer has talked a lot about what the governor, governor has proposed and the importance of affordable housing. We the people agree that affordable housing is important. However, the proposed location in addition of an HOA with a price point of six hundred thousand dollars for a townhouse will not be affordable for our kids. These will not be starter homes. The governor was talking about three hundred and fifty to four hundred thousand dollar homes being affordable. We also appreciate the developer addressing affordability in his MDP and indicating that a portion of the required five percent moderate income housing component of the project will be met through accessory dwelling units or ADUs. This is a nice way for the applicant to address this, but this is not appropriate. While ADUs are an important tool in providing affordable housing, the required five percent must come from primary dwelling units. We ask the council to realize this fact. The developer is pushing the importance of affordability, yet not solving the problem of affordability with anything he is proposing to the, to the location in addition of the HOA. The developer continues to stress the need for homes to be built immediately to help the housing prices. The reality is that if we are in immediate need of housing, this Copper Meadows would be, not be able to start anytime soon as there are several infrastructure issues and logistics that would need to be corrected by the developer in our opinion, not the taxpayers for this proposal is even being, uh, to even, to even begin being built. If Peterson Homes is sincerely concerned about affordable housing, we have close to eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-three entities entitled, or excuse me, entitled units in West Jordan. I wonder how many of those are owned by Peterson? And how many of these could they start building tomorrow? We ask the council to realize this fact and perhaps the developer can solve affordability and the immediate need for housing elsewhere in the city. There are several flaws with the Peterson proposal. If you look at his MDP, If you look at his MDP and concept plan, the developer is proposing to develop land that is currently owned by Ivory Homes. According to the Salt Lake County Assessor's Office, there's about one acre of land where Stokesley Drive bends in the southwest corner that Ivory Home owns. This is an oversight. Also, in his MDP, the developer states fifty-six percent of the three hundred and sixty-seven homes will be cottage homes. This calculates out to be two hundred and ten cottage homes. His concept plan shows only one hundred and seventy-one. That is a discrepancy of almost forty. Where are all these homes going to go? Also, two hundred and ten cottage homes divided by three hundred and sixty-seven gives you seventy-six percent of the homes with lots that are less than two thousand square foot lots. The Greg Hughes Development has minimum lots of three thousand square feet. Also, if you listen to the Planning Commission meeting, you heard engineering justify rear setbacks of five feet in alleyways. They said they are put in-
Thank you. That is, that is-
Can I do two more lines?
I'm sorry. If we do that, we have to for everybody. Thank you. You could pass it to the person behind you if they've got extra time.
You got it. The last, the last three lines, so. I'm Blake Williams. I'm a member of the Sycamores neighborhood. I've been a resident of West Jordan for forty-seven years, so. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you, and I'll share two lines. When the sewer breaks, who's going to pay for it? The HOA? These are just a few of several examples of the lack of detail and oversight the developer has made. I want to take a couple of minutes and talk about some flaws with the application process. So Code thirteen dash five C dash two states that the applicant must provide an MDA with his application when requesting the PC zone. We, the people, have written proof and video evidence that the applicant submitted such a poor MDA that did not address several key issues that staff decided to rewrite the MDA for the developer in the city's best interest. The developer, however, did not have the city's best interest and declined this MDA. Simply put, Peterson's MDA was to check the box of an applicant or an application requirement. Code thirteen dash five dash four regarding annexation of land states that subsequent to Planning Commission recommendation, the city council shall set two public hearings and be held on the same date, one for the annexation of territories and one for the requested zone designation of these territories. The hearing for the zone designation shall follow immediately after the hearing, considering the annexation. If the annexation is approved, this simply, if the annexation is approved, this simply did not happen, and this code was not enforced. You can't pass a zone designation before passing an annexation as it is written in the city code. The city has received application for annexation. The code does not state to address this in the MDA before zone designation as it is being done. The fact that the proper processes have not been followed, we, the people, ask the developer to resubmit this application after denial of the proposal tonight in one year from now. The chance to make things right has far surpassed, and we, the people, feel that substantial change is needed. We feel the developer has wasted valuable time in the Planning Commission, the City Council, and the community by not researching how to properly submit an application. We feel that we would not be here tonight if this process was taken seriously. The opportunity for the development to make things right should be one year from now, which will allow him to make sure that the proposal meets these requirements of the city of West Jordan. Please hold developers to the standard in which we have set for our city by letting this go to a vote by, sorry, please hold developers to the standard in which we have set for our city by letting this go to a vote tonight and voting no. Thank you.
How's it going? I am Nate Voorhees. I have been in the West Jordan community for about twenty-five years. And I came to the last public hearing with the, or the hearing with the Planning Commission and listened through all of the the different opinions and thoughts, and have thought about that quite a bit since then. And one of the things that, in particular, that stands out to me is the fact that this is a planned community, the PC designation. If we want change to a PC designation, it should provide the benefits of a PC designation. I feel, and I stated this in the last hearing, is I feel like this is being used as a method of removing land that is not needed to be used, or that is not easy to use, I should say. And that, that's one of my major concerns about the, the whole process, is that it seems like we were just removing land because it's not easy to be used, not for the benefit of a planned community. That's the purpose of a PC, is that you have, you know, a one community where you can have all of the things that you need. That's why it's a planned committee and has businesses and has all of those pieces. And I feel like we're not getting that. In addition to that, I really like to point out that there has been no positive from any part of the city for this, this plan, at least that I've seen. We talked about it being denied by staff or being given a negative connotation by staff. Then the Planning Commission also giving a negative. And it just seems that it's not at the point that it needs to be. And I don't think a four-week continuance is going to help that much. I feel as if all that is doing is, is going to make it so that we all are here again, and we go through this exact same process, and we go through hours of talking about how these, the things not following standards, not following code. And in addition to that, I feel like the spirit of the law is not being upheld by the PC designation. And that is my major concern, is that it's great, we need to follow the letter of the law, but we also need to follow the purpose of having that law, and I don't think, or that, might not say law, that designation. And I don't feel as if that's what we're doing. I feel like we are literally using it as a method to be able to cut out pieces of the land that don't want to be used, not to provide public benefit in any way. If we look at Daybreak, we see a lot of open lands that is very useful. I go out to Daybreak, I use that land. I would never go over to that, the land that's being used as trail system in the current setup. And I just want to say that I think that we need to be very mindful of the spirit of the law. Thank you.
All right, just a reminder, we've got twenty-one folks who are participating online. If you would like to speak during the public hearing for this item, please hit the icon to raise hand to let me know that you'd like to speak. That way we can open it up for you to do so. Is there anybody else here in person that would like to speak on this that hasn't already spoken? All right, and I have not seen any hands. Oh, online, right there. There's, I'm seeing Kathy Jones on that. I'm seeing the Lisa on here. I'm not seeing a Cassie Jones. So let's go to Lisa. It's got just your first name. If you would, please share your first and last name. You should be able to unmute yourself now. Let's see, Lisa, you should be able to unmute yourself. Let me push a prompt to you. You should have had a little pop-up saying, request to unmute. Fortunately, someone who hasn't spoken would need to read that. Lisa, it looks like we're having a little bit of an issue there. I'm going to skip past, I'll leave your hand up for just a moment, but I'm going to remove permission to talk because I see Brian Erickson has raised their hand. Brian, you should have the ability to unmute yourself. Looks like you're good. Please share your name, city residence, and then you'll have three minutes. You unfortunately don't see the timer when you're participating on Zoom, so I'll just have a timer going here so you can hear when it goes off if you use it full-time. So, Brian, please.
Thank you. My name is Brian Erickson. I'm a member of West Jordan City. I live in the Hyde Point neighborhood. So I don't have anything prepared to say, but I went to the Planning Commission meeting as well. There were a lot of people that got up and had a lot of important things to say, and and it was, it ended up being denied. And it was denied for very important reasons. And I don't think there should be any reason for it to be approved if the commission itself does not believe that it fulfills what it needs to do in order to benefit our community and benefit the people living there and living around it. I've lived in a prior neighborhood where you have things really compact. You have lots of people parking on the street. You barely drive through it. Snow removal is a really big problem because of all the people driving or parking on the sides of the road. And I just really think that that should be considered. And yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Erickson. All right, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. Yeah, I'm not seeing that. I see it popping up there, but her hand's not raised. I'll hit the button to allow Cassie Jones to speak. If you'd like, please unmute yourself. Yeah, so Cassie, you should have the ability to unmute yourself now. I'm guessing what was happening is on her computer, she may have just tapped it quickly off and on, and it flags it, but her hand's not raised here, so. Still, we're going to err on the side of public participation, and we'll give her another five to ten seconds to unmute, just in case Cassie really does want to speak. If anybody else online would like to speak, please hit the icon to raise hand. Yeah, I'm not seeing any, Ms. Jones is not unmuting. So we'll remove permission to talk. And, okay, oh, there's Lisa's iPhone. Let me open it up so you can unmute yourself. Lisa, if you would, please go ahead and unmute yourself. Share your first name, last name, city residence, and then you'll have three minutes.
Okay, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Okay, so yeah, my name is Lisa Cox. I've been a resident of West Jordan for nearly five years. I live in the Hyde Point neighborhood. And we, as a people, we presented several factual data in opposition to the Copper Meadows proposal, and we've proven that the PC zone is not appropriate for the land. We have shown the developer's utilization of requested zone doesn't match its purpose. We've proven the development is not compatible with Jordan Hills, Hyde Point, or the Jones Ranch development with factual evidence. We have stated directly from the general guiding principles, multiple places the developer fails to meet the spirit of the objective found in the general planning guide. We have showed several infrastructure problems, including water, sewer, ERUs, traffic, and outlandish setbacks. We have shown the lack of detail and several flaws within the development proposal and application process. Simply put, we have shown that this development and influence will change surrounding neighborhoods in a negative way and have proved that with only factual data. We now ask that you accept these factual data and vote no to the proposal and any motions that would impede that decision. We ask that you agree with unanimous recommendation of denial from Planning Commission and uphold city code fifteen dash five C dash five, sorry, thirteen slash five C dash five, thirteen dash five C dash two, thirteen dash five C dash six, thirteen dash five dash four, thirteen dash seven A dash five, thirteen dash five C dash one, and thirteen point one, or dash, dash one dot one. Thank you.
All right, thank you. If there's anybody else, please hit the button to raise hand. All right, Ashley, let me open it up so you can speak. If there's, if there are other folks online who wish to speak, everybody can hit the raise hand icon at once. It's just an online queue. Please go ahead and everybody hit the raise hand icon that I'd like to. And leave it up, yes, please leave it up until you've been given an opportunity to speak. Ashley, you should, let's see. There we go. Ashley, you should be able to unmute yourself now. There you go. If you would share your name, city of residence, and then we'll start the timer.
Thank you. My name is Ashley Rains Partial, and I live in the Hyde Development. I would like to remind the council that the Planning Commission held a public hearing on December fifth, twenty-twenty-three on the proposed general plan, future land use amendment, master plan agreement, and the rezone request for the Copper Meadows development. The Planning Commission voted five to zero to make the recommendation of denial or a negative recommendation to the City Council for the proposed general plan amendment as the proposal fails to properly satisfy criteria A, B, C, and E. The Planning Commission also voted five to zero to make a recommendation of denial or a negative recommendation to the City Council for the master plan agreement as it is anticipated to have a negative impact on surrounding development, fails to comply with adopted ordinances, is not refined for adoption, and doesn't provide sufficient detail or clarity on how and when utility deficiencies will be mitigated. The Planning Commission also voted five to zero to make a recommendation of denial to the City Council of the rezone of the seventy-six point two-one acres from very low-density, single-family residential, public facilities, and low-density, single-family to planned community as the Planning Commission was unable to identify affirmative determinations for approval criteria one, two, and four. The West Jordan Design Review Committee reviewed the Copper Meadows development on April twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Committee members were concerned about the number of guest parking stalls being provided. They also felt the proposal didn't meet the PC standards, as there is no commercial space provided, and they didn't believe the open space plan was unique. The Design Review Committee indicated that they felt proposed bulk standards should be more in line with similar development standards already established in city code. The Design Review Committee felt that no more than two units should be accessed off the shared access points. Ultimately, they voted four to zero to recommend denial of the general plan amendment and rezone. We have a process in place to make sure developments meet our city's standards, and this development clearly does not. I would also just like to mention that it is somewhat concerning as a citizen, particularly in Mr. Jacobs' area, that a developer who has requested a continuance the day before this meeting happens begins his statement to this council with remarks of how much you all know about this process and the intricacies of the design and all of the nitty-gritty fine details when the city planning office doesn't have that information. It's concerning that Mr. Jacobs made the post that he did on a public Facebook almost inviting us not to attend this meeting. I would ask that you guys do vote on this tonight and say no. Don't grant a continuance. They've had plenty of time to work through this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let me remove permission to speak there, and last call for anybody who's online who would like to speak. Please hit the button to raise hand, leave it raised if you'd like to speak. Anybody else in person who hasn't already spoken on this that would like to address the council? All right. One last call for Cassie. All right, I'm not seeing any other hands come up, so we will close the public hearing and turn to the council for discussion. Oh, we'll start with Councilmember Whitlock.
Thank you, Chair McConaughey. I want to first thank the residents that have come out en masse on more than one occasion. I'm I'm very impressed at the homework that they've done and at the time they've dedicated to this project. I feel that they've brought up many legitimate points. A few of mine, as I was going through, they've mentioned, one was the hillside. Another thing that I'm curious about, because my feeling when this project was brought to our work meeting was I felt like the majority of the council really wanted to have a geotech study done prior to us saying yes, and that isn't there, and that's very concerning to me. Many of the things that, that Mr. Green submitted a letter to us that will go in the public record, and many of the things are things that these residents have brought up. And many of those were the things that I noticed as I reviewed the documents as well. I appreciate Peterson's development. They have done some great things for our city. But for me, I'm ready to, to go with denial, just because this doesn't fit in so many ways. And a little bit of a, I understand that our general plan, I get it, that it's a living document, but we did just update it. And I wish that the Petersons and the Jones family, if they were working on this, would have come to us then and said, hey, we'd like to do something different in this area, and, you know, maybe then it could have been changed. I don't really have the appetite to start changing it Don't really have the appetite to start changing it. For everything. I agree that this this particular plan doesn't really fit. The topography. I'm very concerned about geotech and would need to have that. Before I could feel good about it, just as we did with another development farther to the north on our north border. So. And and these residents are here asking for a no vote and. I'm willing to give it to them. I would love to hear what the rest of the council has to share. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We'll move to Councilmember Green.
First off, I emailed the council, all the council members a. What was it? A seventeen-page document the other, the other night. Titled Issues and Objections. I, without objection, I'd like that admitted into the record, and that way I don't have to talk for an hour.
A formal motion or just no objection?
I think no objection.
I'm not seeing any objection. So real quick, with that being admitted to the record that Councilmember Green emailed to us. That'll be included online after the meeting with the minutes, but that might take a little bit. You're welcome to email the council office. And Alan stepped away from us for a second, but you're welcome to contact the council office to get a copy of what he's been, what he's asked to. Admit to the record, so you can see it a little sooner. Sorry, Councilmember Green.
Let me just address a couple of things that I see. Based on, based on the way the application submitted, we can only, there's only two ways that we can vote tonight. Let's vote no or vote to remand. Vote to postpone. I will not, I will tell you, I will not vote for a continuance because a continuance means it comes back to this body. If if we want it, if 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 we're gonna do something, it needs to go back and it gotta go through the process, right? The Design Review Committee was bypassed on this process. And I think there's gotta be enough changes, but it's gotta go back to the Planning Commission with more public hearings, and if we don't do that. Then. I'd just assume vote no and start over. But just a couple of issues. One, if you recall when we did Wood Ranch to the north, the annexation was an integral part of the plan. To add the annexation, it's just part of the MDP and say, well, we'll annex later. No, the annexation has to be part of this plan because we don't have jurisdiction over that three point one acres. Three point one fo- four acres that sits outside of West Jordan City. And we can't say it's part of a project that's in West Jordan City unless it's part of our city. I mean, I think that's, I think that's just typical. Councilmember Whitelock did mention about the general plan and it just being amended. I do agree with that comment. The fact of the matter is, we may not be putting a twenty-acre park there on the west end of that. And maybe that part needs to be changed because I don't think the city has eight to ten million dollars to buy the land, put a park in there, but that's a different story. But I do think that the annexation has to be there. I do agree with the citizens that there's compatibility issue. Currently, as it sits, seventy-six per, seventy-three percent of the properties on this development are two thousand square foot acre lots or less. That's twenty units to the acre. The way I, with my math, that's a whole lot different than the. Third acre lots and half acre lots that are on the west side of, that are on the west side of the Sycamores. And a whole lot, and it's the same with Jones Ranch. If there's a compatibility thing, we've got to make this compatible with Jones Ranch and with. With the Sycamores. Now, the neighbors aren't gonna like, the neighbors of the Sycamores aren't gonna like this, but I do believe that the PC is the appropriate zone here. But it's gotta be done right. Because to the north, Woods Ranch is being PC, it's a PCH. Sycamores is a PC zone, no matter whether you like that or not. Sycamores is a PC zone. And Jones Ranch is a PC zone. Filling it in with a seventy-five acre PC zone is not incompatible, but it's gotta be done right. The other, the other issues, the other two issues that, well, there's, there's three issues. One. The hillside protection ordinance does protect that hill in the corner, and we've got to pay attention to it. I question whether that hillside can actually even be used for open space. Now, I know that I'm just a lowly MI officer who didn't study map reading a whole lot, but contour lines normally are twenty feet apart. And when I do the twenty-foot contour mark to the top of the hill, and I did my calculation, that hill is twenty-seven point five percent. Grade. That's close enough to thirty that I want it to make sure that it's not thirty and that it can't, that it excluded. And we can't pull, we can't bulldoze that hilltop off. To fill in a gravel pit because that violates the hillside ordinance and violates the. The. Yeah, violates the hillside ordinance and a couple of other things. We haven't heard anything in the details about how we're gonna match the grading with Jones Ranch. Jones Ranch is gonna go to middle of the gravel pit, middle of the gravel pit, the the north is is Copper Meadows. We've got to have a consistent grading client here, so houses aren't twenty feet above another because we graded different, and there's no. Nothing to indicate from Ivory that they've worked together on that. We did hear in the Planning Commission that there was talk about private utilities. I will vote no a hundred percent of the time to have a private utility in the neighborhood. It doesn't make sense to have the HOA try to maintain the sewer. And then also try to justify to the residents that live there that they get to pay the same sewer rate as everybody else in the city. And then when the sewer rate, when the sewer pipe fails, then guess who gets blamed for the sewer? And even though it's the HOA that's paying for it, no, that that's an impossibility. The other issue is, I believe there's a serious issue with the open space and the open space calculation. If you add the ivory property, you add the seventy-six acres and the the Jones. Mountain Estates property and the three point one-four acres, that's actually an eighty-acre development, not a seventy-six acre development. Eighty-acre development means there has to be sixteen. Acres of open space and it's gotta be done right. So I'm not sure that the, I'm not sure that the opens, that this is actually even calculated right because. My calculation is the 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 development is eighty acres. We've had some issues with man-made slopes. We don't know which man-made slopes, thirty percent, which ones are gonna be graded, and I, we need those details. The, Councilmember Whitelock talked about the the geotech, and then just real quick. I think there's some inconsistencies in the ER, ERU calculations. It doesn't make sense. One, we all start with an ERU, but then there are ERU calculations that just go all over the place. I love that the, I love that the fact that the engineering report says there's. No impact on existing sewer system, even though we add three hundred and seventy-six homes. If you wanna, if you wanna add BS to BS, I'll call BS any day. The other thing that I have a problem with is, and and I'm not a transportation engineer and I don't pretend to play one on TV. And I didn't stay at a Holiday Express last night, but I can tell you. That when I look at charts and transportation and they tell me that when we build three hundred and seventy-six houses and the traffic count's gonna go down. I have to call BS. And there's a table that shows that, and I think it's the intersection of eighty-two hundred South and Cricket that shows that the traffic counts would actually go down. When we increased the houses by three seventy-six. Now, like I said, I'm not a traffic engineer and I can't play one. I I I'm. I used to recruit engineers for UDOT. They can, they they, you know, I gave them a Palm Pilot so they could do their calculations. Other than that, I I I don't understand that, but. And, you know, and and they did, you know, it's. Overall. This, this, this just doesn't. Just doesn't work. And 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 you know, there's. There are, there are ways that it may be able to work, but. And and I, and I get, and I sympathize. That seventy-six acres of land, and I think all of you guys will agree, that seventy-six acres of land is probably not the. The most prime piece of re. Let's, let's put it this way, the Utah Jazz is not lining up to put the new Utah Jazz. Facility on the, on the, on the, the new Delta Center on the gravel pit, right? We know, we know that. But the fact of the matter is, is that, you know, there's gotta be some balance. Understand that there's gonna be some density, but there also has to be compatible, there also has to be compatible homes. And and having seventy-six percent of the. Or seventy-three percent, let me make sure my numbers are right, seventy-three percent, it's the fifty-six and seventeen. Having seventy-three percent of the homes on two thousand square foot lots or less. Isn't compatible with most anything. Well, I'm gonna tell you, it's not most compatible with most anything in the city. And so. I get the need to pencil out. But, so, I would be okay, I I will just declare, I'll be okay with a. A motion to refer and have it go back through the process. Probably, and 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 the, and the, everybody from the Sycamores would be mad. And the developer will be mad, and I made both people mad if we do a motion to refer, which means I probably, that's probably the right decision because we made all of you mad. But. That's the only, that's the only motion. If 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 we don't do a motion to remand, if somebody wants to do a motion to continue. Or to postpone, I am not in favor of that. It's gotta be either a motion to remand and start this process over. Or it's gonna be a no. So that's where I stand.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say thank you for showing up and coming out organized and with. Talking points and with. You know, the organization that you put in for for months and months. I appreciate that. I want to apologize. Sometimes Facebook posts don't come off reading the same way they're written. And so sometimes when you, when you type something, it it. The person who reads it doesn't read it in the same voice you wrote it in. So I want to apologize that what I said was obviously taken. Away other than what I was intending, so I want to apologize for that. My goal with that, the only reason I did that, Monday night, I talked to to Mr. McNinch on the phone, Monday evening, afternoon, evening. And. And he mentioned, hey, if there's, if it put on the agenda that we're gonna postpone this to a later date, then we won't bother showing up. I wanted to just save everybody some time. I know you don't like coming down here. I know, I live. Two hundred yards from the Sycamores. I know how far the drive is. I do this three times a month, at least. And in six o'clock traffic, it's not, it's not fun, especially getting to Mountain View, right? Seventy-eighth, right? So, yeah, I know we're fixing that. So I I know, I just wanted to save you guys five days before Christmas. Go shopping, have some hot cocoa. Watch a Hallmark movie. I didn't want to make everybody come out here more than once. That's why I put that up there. Jake said that that he would put it up there if we got that on the agenda. I worked all day Tuesday to get that on the agenda. You can ask the staff how many phone calls I made. And the developer, how many phone calls I made. And we got that on the agenda and got it stated there, so there was no ambiguity that the developer was asking for more time. And so you guys have more time, but. Sorry, that's, that's why I put that out there. There was no decision. My my comment that I I'm sure that the developer will be granted some sort of. Grace comes from eleven years of doing this, three years on the Planning Commission, eight years on the City Council. I have never seen a developer ask for more time that didn't get it. We didn't have a secret meeting. We didn't all meet in a back smoke-filled room. I promise, okay? I didn't even call anybody. Not one of them. I only called Chris just to make sure we could put that on the agenda because he's the chair. Sorry, Councilmember McConaughey, I do try to stay formal in this meeting. So anyway, there's, there's that. I just wanted to get that out there, correct the record a little bit. As to whether campaign donations affect my vote, you should ask the Petersons how often I vote for and against their stuff. They, all they want is a fair hearing, and that's all I'm. Promise to give them, and I'll promise to give that to any one of you that brings an application to the city. I'm not bought and paid for by less than ten percent of the contributions to my campaign this year by one developer, does not buy my vote. I, I a little bit resent the implication that I'm for sale. My, my record says otherwise. That said. A lot of the points brought up tonight were good points. Some of them weren't so good, some of them contradicted each other. But there was enough brought up that I think you're right in a lot of ways. The application before us tonight. Is missing some things. There's some, there's some incompleteness, there's some compatibility issues maybe. There, 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 there's some, some issues with it. I'm willing to give the developer time to fix those. Okay, that's just me trying to be fair. I would do it for you if you brought an application to the city and you didn't donate to my campaign. And you asked for more time. I'm happy to give you more time. They're investing hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in this process, whether that pays out for them or not is not my concern. But I can give them a little bit of leeway to try to make it work. That's all I'm doing tonight. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and move. That's okay, we can do discussion to the motion if if it's okay. I'm gonna go ahead and move that we do refer this back to staff. To be modified and changed. By the developer working with the staff and come back through the process through the Planning Commission. And through, back to the City Council that dropped.
I'll, I'll second that if you will include in the motion. That if it goes back to the Planning Commission, another public hearing has to be held. I thought that was understood, but yeah, okay.
We have a motion by Councilmember Jacob, a second by Councilmember Green. Discussion to the motion.
I wanted to, thank you. I wanted to echo, I'm not gonna rehash what everybody else has said because I agree with a lot of the points. But I do want to move on record saying thank you. This is how this should work. This is how you make changes and this is how you make our city better. And I appreciate every single one of you for showing up. I appreciate you for working hard and helping everybody show up and realize how this process works. Because you're making our community better. So thank you for being here.
Councilmember Pack.
Thank you, Chair. Usually I'm brief. Just to respect everyone's comments, I thought that I would address a lot of the the issues if I may in a little bit more. Details, so just to set the the tone for a little bit lengthier. I too appreciate all of the time and effort and obvious dedication to researching. And developing what was brought here tonight. It seems that there might be a question as to what is being requested to be denied. Is that the application? Is that the motion for continuance or referral, which are two different things, but can have, share a little bit of the same idea? So to start off with, please know I do not disagree with what's been stated. Those who know me understand that I also strive to flesh out all sides of an issue, and I'd always be a devil's advocate no matter what was stated. And since not one positive comment was made tonight in favor of the development. I thought that I would just share some positive comments that your fellow residents have told to me but are afraid to come and mention tonight. Because of what we saw tonight. Everything was said in a very respectful manner. But they're afraid of the backlash that they will receive due to the public clamor. There's a large group think, obviously, that's transpired tonight. Thank you for coming out again. I'm not saying anything negative about it. But I also, I'm a believer that you find what you are looking for in any person, circumstance, or event. And it's obvious that everything that was researched today was one hundred percent looked at from that negative view of why this should not be passed. Now, again, I'm not disagreeing with you. I also want to echo what Councilmember Jacob said. It's easy to put a different emphasis on a different syllable and take something in a different context. And read that differently than how it was written. I also want to mention and and state that Councilmember Jacob did not contact me on this issue. I did not contact him. I've been in multiple meetings with Councilmember Jacob and the developer. And we've always stated clearly, Mayor as well, that we always do what's in the best interest of the city. Just by virtue of elections being expensive, who are the major campaign contributors while they are developers? And it's a fact that the majority of candidates usually receive donations from developers. I'd like to point out that. I did serve on Planning Commission, and so I always want to respect their viewpoints. I served on General Plan. I always respect their viewpoints. It should be noted that the Planning Commission did not vote on a motion for continuance or to table or to postpone or to refer. So that that wasn't in the cards during that discussion. Many people said a major concern is not necessarily the density, but the parking issue, the topographical usable open space. You know, being less than twenty or thirty percent. Definitely agreed. So I just want to flesh out a couple of pros and cons here, just offering an alternative point of view. Again, not even saying that I agree with my own point of view that I'm expressing right now, but just to hopefully get the idea that. If everyone can be open-minded, I know it's hard to be personally open-minded when you're passionate about a viewpoint. if everyone can be open minded, I know it's hard to be personally open minded when you're passionate about a viewpoint. I've attended numerous American Planning Association conferences in my time uh in in service just to try to understand the trends and projections and options and perhaps a couple of stories and analogies might help just to uh help illustrate what I'm trying to say. Uh when I was campaigning door to door, one of the major issues that people mentioned to me that they're concerned about in West Jordan is affordable housing. And so you might think, well, how does all this go in to what we're saying here? Well, these are the ideas that others have mentioned to me as well that I'm simply trying to state. Obviously, when a less let let's say that when a new development is proposed to go in, it's usually always adjacent to an established development because you're not gonna put a new development out in the middle of nowhere. It would be egregious on expense to run utilities out to that. And so there's always gonna be a higher density than the density surrounding the neighborhood. It doesn't necessarily mean it's high density, but it's a higher density. Of course, that saves on utility and infrastructure cost. We as a council are also facing heavy pressure from the state to supply affordable housing. Or else the state says, okay, well, we'll take away your class B and C road funds. Now now what are you gonna do? So there's outside pressures at the macro level as well. And ma- maybe I should put it this way. When I moved in twenty five years ago, I didn't have any children and I thought, hey, this will be our homestead. It's a half acre lot. This is gonna be great. I can kick a soccer ball, throw a frisbee. It's gonna be awesome. Planted a lot of trees. And now twenty five years later, kids are grown. And uh let's not even talk about trying to clean up all of the mature tree leaves at the end of the fall. That's always tough. Uh so the land that I thought would be very usable isn't usable now as much as I thought it would be and I spend most of the time uh uh not on it, except for having it mowed. Um so affordability is definitely a huge issue in the current model, of course, is people wanna have time and money to be able to have freedom and not be tied down to their to their lawns. Not saying that I know what everybody thinks. But if affordability is a huge issue, and I think that most of you would agree because it's nice, all of our homes appreciated, but in order to sell it and buy another one close by, well, you're not anywhere ahead. The the problem is that this summer I'll have three children in college and all of them have stated, I'm gonna have to move outside of Utah to find a home that's affordable. Where am I going to live? And so with less density comes higher house prices. So where's that juxtaposition and happy meeting point of not wanting a higher density, but also having a place where our children and grandchildren can actually move to? Because aren't we all a product of past expansion of West Jordan, the homes we live in? Right? And I'm seeing some smirks already. So people already aren't open minded to just considering an alternative point of view. So maybe consider that there are different options. Perhaps consider, could you afford to buy your own home today at today's housing prices? Most people I've talked to have said no. Uh I moved in, my house was under two hundred thousand and now it's quadrupled that. I can't afford that. Can't afford that. Perhaps another analogy, recently, the prison needed to be relocated. I think we would all agree we need a prison. And I think we probably all agree, we don't want the prison to be in our backyard. Uh same thing with uh NIMBYism on having a development that's more dense than the one that we live in. And I don't disagree. Again, I want to empathize and think what would I want in this circumstance? If it were proposed to be right next to my neighborhood. A statistic is that less than fifteen percent of Utah renters can afford to get into a three hundred to four hundred thousand dollar home. And I don't think we can find three hundred to four hundred thousand dollar homes. So I think it'd be much less of a percentage, five to six hundred thousand dollar home. Another statistic is for every one thousand dollars in a price increase in a home that prices out seven hundred people. So it's definitely a challenge to try to take all of this into consideration. And yes, just consider the application at hand for what it is, the application at hand. But all of this affects the application at hand. I'm grateful that developers proposing units for EMT first responders. It's not a high rise apartment. I also believe that gentrification is important where you can have a variety of housing types, where you can have a starter home, family home, trophy home, retirement home, you can have grandparents and children together. And I understand that there is pressures on school population and roads. But but truly, if you look at the demographics, the way to get the roads widened and the way to have less crowding in schools is to have more infill so that more schools are built and the roads are widened. And that's a little bit counterintuitive, but that's the way that it works. Unless you have outmigration from students just growing up and exiting the educational system. So it it's my understanding, unless I'm mistaken, that the developer has in good faith striven to remediate seventeen specific concerns tendered by residents and voiced by planning commission. And if they're in good faith trying to meet this, I don't see what it matters if it's four weeks or a year, we'd all be back here anyway. Especially if the open space usable topography can be mitigated. And there'll be additional parking measures so that there won't be on street parking. I think that that helps out because I wonder if anything that's proposed would meet residents' concerns. I I mean that respectfully. Uh because mi- mi- might I might I inquire by raise of hand, who hears from District Three? Do you reside in District Three? Who hears in District Three? Right. Is there anybody who's in District One or Two? Anybody here in District Four? Thank you. So a couple of people. So the reason that I ask that is I don't think that we've done a good job articulating this in the four years that I've been on council. That planning commissioners are appointed at large to look at the macro level of the city. Now there's, the mayor strives to have a demographic representation of all four districts. But the district elected council members are supposed to represent their district residents first and foremost. Yes. So the comment to the motion is that I have not received nearly as many inquiry or concern for District Four residents from District Four residents as from District Three. I don't want to be myopic thinking that what happens outside of District Four does not affect the entire city. But I hope you you get the idea of a different way of looking at all of this, that I'm elected to represent District Four concerns and District Four has not had the concerns because it's not in their backyard. So just another point of view where truly speaking to the motion, I agree with you. I agree with planning commission. The planning commission did not have an opportunity to look at a motion to refer. We'd be back here again regardless of timeframe. And if the applicant in good faith addresses all of these concerns and in the fifteen years that I've been here, I've never seen a denial for a motion to refer or continue. I I agree, I would not vote to pass the proposed uh application. I would simply uh agree that it should be able to be referred back and go through the process through planning commission and then back through city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Pack. Just a quick refresher, we have a motion and a second. Uh Councilmember Jacob, can you quickly refresh the motion that we're discussing?
Yeah, it's a motion to refer the application back to staff to come back through the process, including a planning commission public hearing.
Thank you. So continuing uh discussion to the motion, Councilmember Whitelock, and then we'll go to Councilmember Bennett and then myself.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate that Councilmember Jacob wants to remand it back to staff. I feel like this is just sending it back. It it's just another way for a continuance, which is what Councilmember Jacob pushed to get on the agenda to begin with. And my problem with that is I saw this occur on another development. And the residents got weary and felt like we weren't listening and many of them told me that. And then it passed. And I don't think what is occurring there is going to help with affordable housing. I don't think that it is going to be better for West Jordan. And I think sometimes giving the residents, listening to them. And I get that not every resident is here tonight, um nor did they come to the planning commission. But what I do understand is many residents have come to speak up. They're not, they're not an aggressive mob, so I'm sorry if someone else feels they can't come. We provide many methods for them to give input. So they could have called via Zoom and just said they were Cindy from West Jordan. It's not like we check IDs. So no one would know if they were really Cindy from West Jordan or if they were Mary Lou. So I struggle with, some people were afraid to show up and voice a different opinion. It certainly could be the case, but I struggle with that. I struggle with a development plan from a developer that is a seasoned developer to come to the council in the state that this plan came to us. They even acknowledge it's not ready. It is clearly not ready on any level. It has so many problems. It's not meeting our code. There are other property land owners that need to be contacted. There's so much work that needs to be done. I don't see the problem in just saying no as the planning commission did. That just gives them a year. It gives, it's basically a year. We don't have all the utilities up there anyway, so it's not like if we said yes in a month or two months, they're going to be able to go and start getting all those houses in for this housing need that we need. And I want to point out that in West Jordan, we have the most affordable housing in the southwest quadrant. And the evidence of that is that we have all the Title One schools in in Jordan School District. I agree that we need affordable housing, but as a city council member, I can't do anything about the affordable housing. I have talked to developers and said, hey, can't we put in some more basic furnishings? And they tell me they can't. Uh you know, they're the builder, that's their choice. But I know that when we were looking to buy our first home, interest rates were ten and thirteen percent. They were offering sweat equity that I don't see being offered now. They were offering ways for people to get into homes that perhaps we need to get creative again and use some of those again. I just feel like my job is, as Councilmember Pat pointed out, he represents just a little corner of our city. I represent the whole city. All of these residents have come and I didn't count how many, but there are numerous. I also listened to the planning commission to hear their thoughts there. For me, this should be a no and we should welcome Petersons to try again, but not with the same plan. I just don't think this plan is appropriate for this area. It doesn't integrate well into the other communities that border it, as we have been told. And there are a lot of issues that still need to be worked out. I'm not convinced this is just a let's tweak this and this. I think there's more to it than that, so I have to vote no. I wish that before all of the council members had an opportunity to weigh in, we hadn't had a motion. Because I would have been motioning to deny as the planning commission did. Thank you.
Councilmember Bennett.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. I'm gonna try to keep my comments to three minutes so I can be the same as all of you. I am the temporary member of the city council. And I just have to tell you that I know every single one of these people that are sitting up here. And there is not a single one of them that does not have my full respect and I know them each and every one to be people of integrity. Now, savings, having said that, as far as my vote goes tonight, I can't be bought. I'm not running for election. I haven't run for election. I'm simply interested in what's best for West Jordan City. It's not personal. It's simply what is the right choice. So as I've weighed the evidence, I also got in my car and I drove out to the gravel pit. And I drove around and I wanted to see for myself the different grades and the different topography and the different areas that that was being considered for this development. And then I drove around to your subdivisions. And I got on the streets and I saw your beautiful homes and I saw your places where you have decided to make your home as permanent as possible by coming to West Jordan. And so I appreciate the fact that you're here tonight to make sure that these honorable people are actually listening to your comments and I can guarantee that you have been heard. Um my feeling is that this development, again, this is not personal. But I feel that this development is not the right development for this place at this time. Um there are several reasons that have been outlined by other members of the council and many members of the public. But my primary uh problems with it is the topography. I would really like to see the geotech aspects taken care of. I cannot see the mitigation of the gravel pit not being an absolute major factor in having this development go forward. I also see the utility, excuse me, the utilities that need to be run to this development to be able to take care of the influx of people that will be moving there needs to be addressed in a very reasonable way and it needs to be part of the process as outlined in our city code. So these are my feelings. I am going to be voting no on this motion. And I would vote no on uh the development itself. I don't know that's gonna have any legs under it tonight, but I just want to let you know that even though maybe I may be the only one who's voting in that way, the people up here have listened to what you have to say and they have their own thoughts and their own reasons. And you're welcome to talk to them afterward. But we're in the end, we're all up here together to try to figure out what's best for West Jordan. So I hope you will give us that confidence. Thank you.
With four seconds to spare. There it is. Okay, Councilmember Green, then I'll chime in.
Real quick. Um I don't know if I can keep it to three minutes, but I you know, the last time I was in front of an appellate court, I did, it was they 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 were amazed, so. No matter what the vote is tonight, you have to consider that you won. Because your voices are heard. You heard me say if I if if I don't vote for a motion to postpone, I'd vote no for this. It it doesn't, it it's got issues, okay? The first time I saw the concept plan on this, I thought it's a pretty good concept, but with the devil's in the details. And the details are coming out that there are issues. I keep my 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 last couple of comments is I wonder why we get incomplete applications that continue to come to the council. It frustrates me as much as it frustrates you that we see incomplete applications to the council. But I believe in this circumstance postponement is fair. What I believe is, is that based on what Peterson Development has heard tonight, they can go back and attempt to make adjustments or rework this project. If they can't make it work, they know where this council stands on that and hopefully they'll withdraw before they come back and get told no again. If that's real, if they can't make it work, we'll put the onus on them at this point in time. So that's why I I just believe that postponement is fair. And like I said, it probably makes everybody mad, so it's probably the right, it's probably the right decision tonight. Um but that's why I think postponement is fair, is that it gives them a chance to take what you have all said. And by the way, there's not anything that you said that I disagree with. That uh you take what you said, what the council has said and try to incorporate. If they can't do it, they know where they stand. And so that's where we need to be. And so that's that that's that's where I'm at. I hope you understand.
All right. So speaking of the motion, I'll be in favor of the motion and the reason is twofold. Uh number one, we've got uh an application that started that's made its way to the city council. Rather than us stepping away and waiting for a new project to come back, I'd like to stay connected to it and make sure that we're able to influence the direction that it goes. I don't want to um step back, let staff kind of run with it again and find ourselves in the future with 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 the same thing. Uh second, uh I think everybody has noted that there are material changes that are necessary. Uh the first of which is the MDA, which uh the applicant brought up. Um if we were to say no, that would If we were to say no, that would just prohibit them from bringing this exact same proposal back to the city council for one year. If they had something materially different, they could bring that back next week if they wanted to. By going this route, I feel like it gives the council potentially a better chance to maintain the public engagement and ensure that it ends up where we'd like it to be. So I think we're all going the same direction. We want to get to the same place. Where I, I feel like we're kind of splitting hairs with how to get there, but I will be in favor of this. The only other thing that I'll share that hasn't really been pointed out yet is I feel like we've got a failing in the process where something goes to the planning commission and then we automatically bring it to the city council after it hits the planning commission. If there are substantial changes or if the planning commission recommends for denial, I think we need to modify our process so that there's a, a potential for the developer to hit a pause button and reconsider before it automatically comes to the city council like we saw in this case. One of my biggest frustrations, and this is no fault of the developer. I'm actually very appreciative of the developer for listening to the council. When they brought it to us in our work session, we said, in fact, I think it's councilmember Whitlock and Worthing that said, no, 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 we want to hear from the residents, go hold a meeting with them and get their thoughts and then come back to us. But when the planning commission gives a denial, developers often say, okay, well, we took the points that they had. We've addressed those and now we're bringing it to you, city council. You don't need to go back and double check with the planning commission that we've met everything. Just take our word for it. Petersons expressed a willingness to go back and make sure that we're actually hearing from the other recommending entities from their own voice rather than just taking their own word for it. So I appreciate that request for the continuance. And I'd like to kick it back so the planning commission can say, yes, they have met those concerns or no, they haven't, so that we're working on, working on opinions and insight from more than just the city council. We need to leverage the planning commission wherever we can. With that, I don't see any other lights up to speak to the motion. So I would turn to Ms. Quick for a reminder of what the motion is and then a vote on that motion.
You have a motion to refer this item to go back through the process to the PC, to the planning commission and then back to city council after an additional public hearing has been held. Okay, great.
Let's vote.
All right, let's start with councilmember Bennett.
No.
Councilmember Whitlock?
No.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Chair McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Pack?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bloom?
Yes.
I show the motion passes five to two.
All right, thank you. Part of me wants to take a recess. The other part of me worries that we're getting a little further past bedtime, but yeah, I'd be open to a motion.
I'm going to move for about a five minute break.
About a five minute, I'll call this for order no later than seven minutes and I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll take up to a seven minute break, which puts us reconvening at eight thirty-nine, no later than eight thirty-nine. All right, just a one minute warning. We'll reconvene in about one minute. So if councilmembers could start making their way back to the makeshift dais, we'll get started here shortly. All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is eight thirty-nine. And if we could get a couple more councilmembers back to the dais, I'd love to reconvene the meeting so we can, we can be respectful at the time of those who are still here. Dragon. All right, I think we've got one councilmember on the way. You are too little to be a councilmember. Okay, with that, let's move on to, actually, before we, before we formally reconvene, that actually brought up a good point I don't want to forget. Mr. Anderson pointed out that the council office staff has gone to some rather extreme lengths to make sure all the public who wants to participate can. And there is one participant who is online, who likely wanted to participate in citizen comment. So once we're done with the last public hearing, I'll likely be looking at the council to see if there's a willingness to reopen, to give that person an opportunity. Mr. Framo, that, that would be you. So I want to make sure that we don't miss that, especially, yeah. So with that, I'd like to call back to order city council meeting after our roughly five minute plus recess. It's still December twentieth, twenty twenty-three. We are going to move on to public hearing C, which is the Parker Place issue. And I believe that's going to be introduced to us by Mr. Forsyth. Or I see Scott Langford up and running towards the door.
Chair?
Yes.
Over here. Just, are we still, are we going to reopen the citizens' comments for Ms. Framo to be able to speak?
I will look for a motion to do that after the public hearings are done. Mr. Forsyth.
All right, thank you, Chairman, members of the council. So there's two ordinances that you're considering tonight. One is for a rezone of the cottages at Parker Place subdivision. And more specifically, this would be changing the current R three eight zone with a senior housing overlay to just the standard R three eight base zone. And then the second item is to amend the adopted two thousand eighteen cottages at Parker Place development. So just to give a little bit of background, and my slides are actually all the way at the end, so I'm going to fast forward here a little bit. Oops, too far. I thought I was speaking second, so there we go. All right, so just to give a little bit of a background. So back in two thousand twenty, this is actually the second time that the owner of this subdivision, it's gone through a couple owners, but back in two thousand twenty, it was proposed to basically do this exact same thing, which is remove that senior housing overlay. Now that was denied unanimously by the council at that time. So this time, the, the current owner, which is actually different from that original owner, is kind of taking a little bit of a different approach in trying to improve the existing subdivision a little bit, so. So you can kind of see here on the map, this is essentially what the zoning map looked like with the existing and then with the proposed as well. So this, this did go to the planning commission for a public hearing. And in that discussion, there was a lot of discussion about traffic and some of the proposals. So in that motion, they made a motion to make a positive recommendation for both of these items. However, both of them ended up failing in a split vote. So at that time, this wasn't included in their recommendations, but staff had made recommendations to the planning commission. There were a few ordinances that still needed to be met with regards to parking and sidewalks. And I'll kind of go over those here just in a second. But you can kind of see, this is a concept plan that they're proposing. This is a little bit different from what was proposed to the planning commission in the fact that they've now incorporated a lot of those recommendations from staff. So the parking lot, they've kind of expanded that in a little bit to give a little bit more back out space for those parking spaces there. They, they've made sure that those are nine by eighteen stalls. They've added ADA parking. They, they're now preserving that sidewalk along Drake Lane. Those are just some of the changes there. So that's, that's basically it in a nutshell, and I can answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Forsyth before we turn to the applicant? All right, thanks, Mark. So I'm not sure who, if you would please introduce yourself and we'll begin.
All right, my name is Candida, C-A-N-D-I-D-A Benson. And I am speaking on behalf of Liberty Homes, but I'm wearing two hats tonight. I'm actually a resident here in the city of West Jordan. Grew up here. My parents still own my childhood home, which by sheer coincidence is directly adjacent to the Drake Farm. So I grew up right next to the Drake Farm on the west side of Drake Farm. With that in mind, I would not be standing up here today on behalf of Liberty Homes if I genuinely did not feel like this was benefit. I love the city of West Jordan. When it was time for me to purchase a home in West, or in Utah, West Jordan was the first place I looked and it's the place that I purchased. So I genuinely do believe that this is a benefit to everybody in West Jordan, to the neighboring properties who we have discussed this with in as much length as we possibly could. There was one neighbor that would not speak with us despite multiple attempts to do so. But we did speak to all of the, the three homes that are directly adjacent to our properties and they all expressed support for changing this. We spoke to neighbors on the other side of Drake Farm and they also expressed support of this. We do have signatures from twenty-two of them, as well as some verbal agreements by a couple of other ones that we can provide if you would like it. So just to, I'm not sure how that, do you do the presentation, the slide, or am I doing this? The clicker's right here, okay, perfect. Go down, got it, thank you. All right, so the cottages at Parker Place, this is on Drake Lane, which is about seventy-four hundred south and just west of Redwood Road. Oh, I clicked the wrong one. There we go. You can see the current configuration. Liberty Homes has built six homes. We also have poured two foundations. And we have stopped unfortunately due to some of the market conditions and the lack of interest in purchasing by the senior community here. There we go. That's a little bit closer. You can see the six homes and the two foundations right there. So as I mentioned, I do think this is a benefit to the city and here are some of the reasons why. We could sell to families of all ages. We are priced at a price point that I know none of us like to think is reasonable, but we are in the mid-five hundreds as a starting point, which in this market is considered starter territory. It's where the young families that are just starting out, that's the price point that they're looking at. And with the current configurations and the future ones we're proposing, these homes are actually perfect for those type of buyers that currently cannot buy in our subdivision. And we actually do get quite a few of them coming in that want to purchase and we have to turn them away. I already mentioned the two foundations. One of the advantages here that we are proposing is we are going to reduce the number of homes from fourteen to thirteen. And we are going to take lot number twelve and we are going to turn it into the parking area. And at the request of city, and we've thought city council members, because that was the feedback we received, we added a tot lot on there. And so we think this is a great opportunity to make this area more usable for everyone, including those around us. We are also proposing to build new homes on the five lots that haven't been developed yet that will have two stories, they'll have two, they'll have more than just the two bedrooms. that will have two stories. They'll have more than just the two bedrooms that we were limited to under S H O. And it also allows us to do the longer driveways. We also can fit three-car garages on all of those ones, so we on most, no, we can do it on all. Yeah, so three-car garages, which allows you then to have a wider driveway, and with the longer driveway, that gives you fifteen additional parking spaces that won't be there under S H O. It also allows for larger yard areas so that the families have somewhere that they can, you know, play. So as I mentioned, we have tried very hard to make this work. This isn't an instance where we just got it, and now we're coming back because we want to. We've put a genuine effort into this for about two years, and we've had very little interest and no closings to this point. And the reason is, is that the market has changed. It's factors outside of our control that are now impacting it. The interest rates, I'm sure you guys have all heard about how terrible it's been, particularly for first-time buyers. But one of the groups that has been particularly hit is senior, the senior group. They've taken a massive hit, according to the experts. And that's because a lot of them either A, own their home, or B, they have an interest rate that is significantly lower than what they would finance here. The other factor is, is there's a lot of uncertainty in the market and kind of counter to what some people believe. Over the last year in particular, property values have actually gone down. And so there's uncertainty by them on what they could actually sell their current home for, and if they could transition into this new home with either little or no financing. That's on top of Utah having a very unique senior housing community. People in our communities tend to hold on a little bit longer because their family is close by. They build relationships with neighbors. My family or my parents' community, I can speak to that. Pretty much everybody I grew up with, their parents still live there, so it's, they just like to stay where they're at. So the benefits, again, the lot twelve that we're going to donate for the seven parking spaces, the two-story designs that can allow for the three-car garages and three-car driveways. That's an additional fifteen additional parking spaces on those five homes, plus the seven that we are adding in that park area. We also can finish the subdivision sooner. One of the concerns that has been brought up, both at planning commission and by the neighbors, is the past challenges, and we acknowledge that. You know, I live in District Four, listening to that previous one, I was like, okay, this is interesting. So I empathize with that. But we cannot continue to build unless we sell homes, unfortunately. And so right now, it's on a construction pause until we can have the market recover. And most experts think that the senior community is going to be one of the last ones to recover, unfortunately. With the six homes that are not occupied, occupied homes are safer. An unoccupied home draws people with bad intentions, and that affects the neighboring properties as well. There's also a benefit to the city where you are going to get the tax revenue that will help you with Drake Lane, which is a city street, as well as other things. And of course, additional families mean they go out and shop in the community. I don't know about you, but I don't want to drive far to buy my groceries, so they're going to shop nearby. So are we setting precedence here? We don't believe so, because this is a unique circumstance. And what we are asking is that you look at this on the merits of what's being presented in front of you, just as you would anything else. We've made a good faith effort in the development of everything, making improvements to the subdivision. And so we feel like this is a unique circumstance. With no sales, it also is a little bit easier at this point to make changes, because we can do it just straight out. We don't have to go get individual owner approval. We don't have to do an H O A, and no senior families will be disrupted in this. We agree a hundred percent. It's not your responsibility to make us whole. Like, we know that your role is to do what's in the best interest of West Jordan. But external conditions have made this unsustainable for Liberty Homes. And Katie Writing, who is an H O A specialist, they manage multiple senior housing communities, and they are seeing more and more problems here with senior housing across the state and other developers and builders who are also looking at options potentially moving forward, because the demographic pool is smaller. So any pressure on that is going to be more pronounced. All right, parking. I know this is a big hot-button issue for everyone. So the Liberty Homes disclosure that is signed by all buyers in the subdivision requires that they use at least two spaces in their garages as parking. And they cannot purchase without agreeing to that. With S H O, that pretty much is the only parking that they are going to have for those homes. Without S H O, we can provide additional parking, which we believe will alleviate some of the pressure. And so currently, the south side of Drake Lane, further west, allows for thirteen spaces. Without S H O, the guest parking would go up to thirty-five, including those thirteen plus the additional spaces. And that doesn't even factor in garage parking, which could potentially be increased with the three-car garage plants. The Drake Farm is one that we know has been impacted significantly through a lot of these processes. And Liberty Homes is very empathetic to them and understand the challenges that they've gone through. A lot of them predate us. But that doesn't mean that we don't care about what they have to say. And through this whole process, we have made every attempt to be good neighbors to them. We've had, we have multiple emails back and forth where we have talked to them. We've met onsite with them and members of the city in an effort to try and do what we could to make this work for them. And that's genuinely what we want to do. So since buying the lots, we put up the block wall that they had been asking for for quite some time. Part of that, when we were in the process of doing that, we discovered that a water access point that they were using was on our property. And so we routed the wall around that water access point so that it did not cut off from them. We also worked with the city and the Drakes to try and help move on the cutting of the curb in the best way that we could. And the city did step forward and do that, which was very beneficial. And after the wall went in, we received an email from Jeanette Drake commenting on the beautiful cement wall. She also commented, Liberty Homes has been helpful to us in other ways as well. She talks about the water access point. She also talks about fill dirt that they needed on the farm that we were more than happy to provide. We had some extra pallets that they came by and asked for, and we were happy to provide that to them as well. So we genuinely, you know, Liberty Homes is a small builder. I think we have four full-time employees. And we live in the communities where we build, so we want to be good neighbors. We genuinely want to do what's in the best interest of everyone. So other impacts that were mentioned was cutting of utilities, et cetera. Overall, development work is substantially completed. That lessens the chance of service disruptions. We can't guarantee there won't be any, but we will take every step we can to try and avoid that. And it's significantly less once you have all the utilities and everything in there. Noise, dirt, and other disruptions that they brought up. The easiest way, the quickest way to get that out of the way is to finish the subdivision. And that's what we'd really like to do. We want to put in nice homes that are nicely priced, that families can buy, and then get out of everybody's way so that they can continue on with their life. That's the Drake Farm. That's the neighbors. That's everyone. Our disclosure statement also states an acknowledgement that the farm is there, that it is an exempted activity under the nuisance laws in the city of West Jordan, and that by buying next to the farm, you acknowledge that you are buying next to a farm, and that may come with noises, it may come with odors and other such disruptions. And you cannot purchase in our subdivision without acknowledging that. For two years, we've made tireless efforts. In addition to the things already mentioned, we've done full-scale marketing efforts that include online and traditional advertising. We had a grand opening event. We've had open house events almost every single weekend up until recently. We did a radio remote broadcast, and we did other promotions and incentives, including interest rate buydowns, where we believe that we can get people's interest rate down as low as four-point-nine-nine, depending on the circumstances. We've also made multiple price reductions, and that includes listing, if I'm not mistaken, all of the homes currently at a loss to Liberty Homes. We also extended hours of staffing in the models. Typically, a model will be staffed roughly from twelve P M. to five or six. We've had our people coming in as early as nine and staying as late as nine. This is an attempt to get people in when it's convenient for them. So we just really want to be a good neighbor to them. We're hoping that this is a good plan. And while we do feel this is a good plan, if something comes up that isn't quite right or needs to be adjusted based on their feedback, on city feedback, we're more than willing to look at it. As mentioned earlier, after the planning commission, they made some recommendations, and the first thing we did on the next day was we started working on it so that we could meet the city requirements. We've invested more than four million dollars into this between all the building, the marketing, and everything else. And unfortunately, we can't continue to just pour money into it. And once again, we know it's not your job to make it whole, but not doing construction here, not having people live here, I don't believe is a good benefit, not just to the city, but to everyone around there, because it's just not productive use of that area that's already been approved for houses here. So we appreciate the time tonight. We respectfully ask that you approve this. And like I said, we do have the signatures from other neighbors in the area. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Are there any questions for the applicant? I see Councilmember Whitelock has raised her hand. Please, Councilmember Whitelock.
Candida, when you referred to parking on south side of Drake Lane, are you talking just parking on Drake Lane? Where are the, I don't remember if it was thirteen or seventeen spaces.
Yes. So as you approach Redwood Road, it is a no-parking zone, and Liberty Homes did put up no-parking signs, as was requested by the city, on both sides of theirs. But as you proceed further west on that road, there is parking allowed, is my understanding. It is a city road, so that was the direction that we were given on that.
Okay, but in the winter, we don't allow parking on city streets because of the snowplows. And my understanding is Drake Lane is a city road. So that's a little bit problematic to me. And when you look at your, you can kind of see it on your one slide. There is a slice that, for whatever reason, we have left as an orphan piece. It's on the south side next to the electrical school. And my understanding is that Gary Cannon still owns that swath of land. It's like less than an acre.
Yes, that's correct, and it's actually zoned commercial presently as well.
So I want to be able to say, let's sell these homes, but I also don't want to create long-term parking issues. I really wish that we could get that property and you could create, which is just lovely, but a parking lot. Because for whatever reason, against city policy, somehow ten-foot driveways were allowed on the homes that you've already constructed. And I understand that you plan to build a little longer driveways, but parking really is a big concern for me. And I understand that they're small homes, but in West Jordan, as I'm sure you're aware, we allow homes to have internal ADUs. And as a way for young families to afford those homes, I could see some of those basements becoming ADUs. So parking is a real issue. Then at one point, you said something about an H O A, but this community will have an H O A, whether it's senior housing or not, correct?
Yes, that is correct, because the two cul-de-sacs are private lanes that will be maintained by the H O A.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record, because I heard something different.
And there's no parking allowed on those per both development agreements.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Additional questions before we open the public hearing? Councilmember Green.
What's the agreement between Liberty Homes and Gary Cannon on the detention pond on the south side of the road?
I'm gonna confer, because I don't know that a hundred percent, and I want to give you accurate information.
Okay.
Okay.
But, okay, so I'll come back to that, but there's got to be something, because that detention pond was, what's the runoff for those houses? So we'll come back to that at the end of the, when we get open for council discussion.
May I address one thing about runoff? We recently did some significant improvement based on the recommendation of the city that was not on our original landscaping plan, where we did install additional drains that come out from the backside of our properties and run down to Redwood Road on there. So that was designed to help with some of the drainage there as well.
This is going to be part of the record. We'll need you to speak from the microphone.
So I can repeat what he said. It does go across Drake Lane and into the detention pond, which was part of the original development agreement, is what he said.
Any additional questions from the council before we open the public hearing?
I've got one.
Okay, Councilmember Green, please.
With this modification of the development plan, the way I read it, you're expecting to keep the setbacks that were granted by the Board of Adjustment?
Only on the existing homes. Yeah, so my understanding, and I am not an expert, perhaps the city staff can, but it stays with.
Some questions that they're gonna answer here.
Yeah, it stays with the original development. So where it's already been developed, it will remain the same. However, on the new ones, we are proposing more traditional setbacks that will have the larger driveways will have the larger backyards. That's what we're going to the two stories.
Propose, are you willing to comply with the current setbacks that are zoned for an R three zone?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I'm asking.
Well, no.
Then, okay.
The answer to your question is no, because the Board of Zoning Adjust-
Apologies. Could you please introduce yourself?
My name is Stephen McCutcheon. I live in Sandy, Utah. I'm a land planning consultant. The Board of Zoning Adjustment changed the setbacks for this property to allow a ten-foot front yard setback. Now, none of the homes have been built with a ten-foot setback. They've been built with about a fifteen, which doesn't make a whole lot of difference. But you know, the Board of Zoning Adjustment made that decision because they were trying to put single-level homes on small lots, and they thought that was necessary. I answered your question.
My question was, is you're not going to comply with the current zoning requirements if we rezone this, correct?
We're gonna comply with the current requirements that the city has approved for the site.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you. Any additional questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Councilmember Green.
Yes. Back in the, let's see, we're, city attorney. Mr. City Attorney, I asked you the other night for a potential question. Can we ban parking on both sides of Drake Lane?
I'm gonna look to Mr. Murray for an answer on that. Excuse me, Mr. Boyce, I think is prepared to speak to that.
Thank you for coming to the microphone.
Yeah, absolutely. So if we do go ahead, right now, there's no agreement in place that would ban parking as part of the development. I think the parking's been allowed on that south part. It has been prohibited on the east side, is it nears Redwood and on the west side? But right now, there's nothing that prohibits the street parking on south, the south side of Drake Lane.
The question is, can we prohibit it?
I think you could.
Okay, that's my, and the second question is, based on West Jordan Code thirteen-seven-G-JAS-nine, has the variance expired?
I'm gonna hand that over to Mr. I, I'm gonna hand that over to Mister uh, So thirteen dash seven G dash nine um says that a no variance shall be valid for a period longer than twelve months. And then there's, there's three unlesses, right? There's unless a building permitted is issued and construction has actually begun within that period, so within the twelve months. Uh, or unless a certificate of occupancy is issued within that twelve-month period. Or unless a longer time is requested and granted by the zoning administrator, and that one does not have a qualifier within the twelve months. So uh, none of those um currently apply to those five remaining lots, but in theory, that last one could, if requested, the zoning administrator.
But it hasn't been requested yet.
Right, okay. But it's my legal opinion, if it was requested, it, it would be legal, yes.
Yep, well, okay.
Okay, any additional questions for staff? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. So uh, if you're online and wish to speak to the Parker Place uh, item on the agenda, please hit the button to raise hand to indicate that you'd like to speak. Please leave that up until we come to you. Uh, we are gonna start with folks who are here in the room first. So if you would like to speak on this and you're here in person, please come to the uh podium. I ask that you share your name, city of residence, and then you can have three minutes.
Okay. Um, my name is Jeanette Drake. My address is eighteen fifty-six West Drake Lane, West Jordan. I'm, I um, I'm one of the owners with my son Daniel Drake of Drake Family Farms Gold Dairy, Utah Century Farm, established in eighteen eighty, which is directly west of the Parker Place subdivision. And my memory is a little bit different than some of the things that the applicant has said. Since two thousand seventeen, when this project was first approved, I've been to numerous public meetings with planning and zoning and city council. I do not enjoy going, being here and I thought I was finished with this routine. This is my file of information and the comments made by myself and my late husband Ron on this issue. We were very naive when this all started. We grant a permission for an emergency turnaround that made the project possible. We did not receive any compensation for granting this easement. We expected that we would be treated a lot better than we were. We've seen at least three developers, Gary Cannon purchased the land from Parker and first Pearson families. Then there was Coldwell Bankers, Sage Homes, and now Liberty Homes. We've experienced dirt, dust, mud, two-cut gas lines, no electricity during milking time, and problems with our irrigation system. West Jordan City Code specifies that changes to an irrigation system have a pre-construction conference with the property owners, and this never happened. One summer, Drake Lane was closed and there was a dusty, dirty detour along the north side of the development to get to our property. We certainly did not expect a curb to be built across Drake Lane itself going west. We lost thousands of dollars because customers did not want to drive to our farm store to purchase our products. The original plans called for a cement wall between our farm and the new houses. And Liberty Homes petitioned to not fulfill their obligations. We're really, we are very grateful to West Jordan City Council that we have the cement wall and that curb has been removed. I hope West Jordan City will stick with the original design and not remove the fifty-five plus designation. Change in the designation would result in a lot more cars and no place to park. We already have plenty of traffic on Drake Lane. We have customers, employees, hay and grain delivery trucks and trucks to pick up pallets of milk. Further west of us on Drake Lane is Tico McCurdy's two-and-a-half-acre property. He is a cement contractor. He boards horses and gives riding lessons. So there are also horse trailers and trailers with cement forms and tools going up and down Drake Lane. At the end of the pavement on lane, we have two T-posts there on the sides and they get knocked down. So it's my opinion that people won't want to park their cars on Drake Lane because they're gonna get hit eventually.
That is time, thank you. Anybody else here in person that would like to speak? Please. And Mr. Drakeway, I do see you online. We'll come to you as soon as we've gone through those who are here in the room.
My name is Chelsea Clark. I am with Liberty Homes as well. And I wanted to begin just saying so, we are so sorry to the Drakes. They really have been through a lot. We don't want to minimize anything that has happened before or during um, the development time. But the real question today is, what happens if we keep the S H O versus removing it? If we keep the S H O, the ten-foot setback will remain. It's gonna remain our understanding, based on what the city has told us, that it remains with the land regardless. That's to answer your question. That's the reason we're answering the way we are is because we were told it stays with the land. However, we are more than willing to s- submit plans that will have a longer driveway because we agree this is going to be an issue and it'll be a much greater issue if we don't remove the S H O because we will only have a ten-foot driveway. No one could come and visit their parents potentially in this community without having a parking spot, right? Right now, we only have a few homes that can accommodate a third-car garage and therefore three spots in the front and three spots in the garage themselves. And this new plan would propose that all five of those would have a third-car garage as well as three car, parking stalls on the driveway. We also are willing to give up a lot, as mentioned, as a concession, to have seven more spots and a tot lot to allow for the younger families to come. We understand that affordable housing is an issue. We're trying to do what we can to offer these to younger buyers. And I think there's a misconception potentially that um, if you have older fam- families living there, that they're gonna have less traffic. The studies that we have been looking at actually say that there's an increase of children living with parents to the tune of um, up to sixteen percent of the entire population is boarding with parents. And after COVID, that increased substantially and sixty-two percent of them are still living with parents. So potentially, you'll have two families per house and no parking. That's why it is so crucial to lift it and let us have families, longer driveways, three-car garages, and a parking lot. I, I really feel bad for the Drakes and I really do believe this is better for them, for their parking situation, and also for some affordable housing for your residents. Yeah, and I think that's most I wanna say.
All right, thank you. Anybody else in chambers I would like to speak? Please.
Dave Clark of Sandy, Utah. I vowed I wasn't gonna get up again after last time. But I just want to clarify, to make sure that he understands, if, if S H O stays, then the cities, my understanding is uh, requiring one-level homes uh, that take up so much of the lot, that then there's no driveway left to speak of, about fifteen feet, but it's not big enough to park cars on. And so only through allowing us to build the two-story homes with the three-car wide driveways and, and garages, will we have those additional fifteen parking spots. And then, of course, the lot that we're donating to create an additional seven parking spots. But with, without lifting S H O, there's only the south side of Drake Lane. That's all there is for parking. And so then if you take that away, then there is zero parking. So um, I think that's all I need to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Andy Hawker, I'm a resident here in West Jordan. So I, I live in West Jordan. I understand the concerns that uh, that both the Drakes as well as Liberty Homes has. Um, there's been a lot of talk about affordable housing tonight. And the, the, about the only thing I see being accomplished here is with this retirement community, is the only thing they accomplish is driving property values down for not only them, but surrounding properties as well. Um, as stated previously, I don't believe this helps the parking situation because of the affordability issues we are experiencing in our state. This does uh, make it so many um, kids are living with their parents longer. So in many cases, it, it is true that you can have multiple families in those retirement communities. So I, I, I do believe that Liberty Homes has met all of the uh, the qualifications to be able to have this changed. Much of which is at their great expense. And that, that's all I have to say and I hope you approve this uh, resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room that would like to speak on this one? All right, we'll go to those online. Uh, Mister Drake, let me set it up so you can speak. You should be able to unmute yourself now. If you would, please uh, the timer. There we go, we can hear you. Please proceed.
I'm, my name is Dan Drake. I'm um, the owner of the property Drake Family Farms with my mom, mother uh, at the end of the lane. Um, this project was a bad project, it was poorly planned and impossible. The execution of the plan has reflected the impossibilities of making this a good development. Um, like, for instance, I just learned that the plan is to have a constant stream of cars down the side of the lane for parking, and it's a very bad idea. That's, and, and I don't know what the answer is, but uh, going forward, we need to come up with some plan, I guess, but I don't think we can have thirteen cars parked down the side of the lane. Um, I just wanted to point out some concerns that we have as neighbors and um, with the business and with the, the right-of-way access that we need for Drake Lane. In a previous meeting, it was pointed, mentioned that the development of Drake Family Farms would hold all the solutions to these problems. But I just wanted to point out that I'm purchasing the farm from the, the heirs of Gordon and Emily Drake, and my, my plan is to never um, develop it. So if that's the plan to have a solution in the development, then you need a new plan. It was also mentioned in a previous meeting by a councilwoman that uh, when they wanted to change the overlay before, that there would be considerable more parking uh, problems because there would be more people living there. And I, I agree that looks like it is a very big problem. I've done some research on the internet and it does look like seniors are much more likely to have one vehicle and park their vehicle in the garage, whereas when you have two families living in a, in a house, they convert the garage to bedrooms and they park all this, the cars on the street. So I, I know that um, I don't have all the answers, but this development is just a nightmare. Shouldn't have ever been approved. So anyway, I guess uh, hopefully we can still drive up and down the road and because we still need to get hay trucks in there. We need to get uh, feed trucks in there, horse trailers in there. And we would like to continue our business. I had to subsidize the business uh, for the years when we, we had no access. And we actually had customers call and say, when are you gonna open your farm again? And it's really infuriating. But anyway, I would like to thank Liberty Homes for the beautiful wall and for uh, finally cutting the curb. We had to drive over a curb for two years for the two homes. And um, anyway, thank you for getting that fixed.
All right, thank you, Mister Drake. Are there any others who would like to speak that are either here in person or online? If you're online, you need to hit the button to raise hand. I'm not seeing anybody online nor in person walking towards the microphone, so I will close the public hearing and turn to the council for discussion. Councilmember Green.
I'm gonna jump in. I was part of the planning commission way back when in a lo, in the galaxy, a long time ago, when Luke Skywalker was on the city council. The plot, property was zoned R one eight. And we were, it was rezoned R three eight with an S H O. If hindsight were twenty twenty, I would have never voted for this project. This project has been a nightmare from day one. Um, and it's still causing problems. I ask about the detention pond and just between the Liberty staff, there's enough confusion that we don't know what the detention pond agreement is with you and Gary Cannon. That detention pond that's on Gary's property was the detention pond for your development for those fourteen homes. Now, if you've diverted the, the water someplace else, then, and, and I see Scott shaking his head in the back. If there's been water diverted someplace else, then we need the engineer, from city engineer, to show us where that water's going because, and you've gotta have an agreement with um, with, with Gary Cannon, so that, that detention pond is maintained in perpetuity. And the question is, if you're, how does your HOA maintain a detention pond in perpetuity on somebody else's land without an agreement? So I think you guys need an agreement. I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. Uh, but we'll let you look at that. As far as I'm concerned, the parking has to be restricted on Drake Lane. Can't be any parking on Drake Lane. Um, Drakes have, Drakes have a, a working business, a working farm. And if there's cars parked on both sides of the street, they're, they're, their, their farm is gonna suffer. There's gotta be a, a, you know, and that's why I asked the question, can we ban parking? The only way that I would approve this is if we ban parking on both sides of the street. The variance. This council in late twenty twenty voted down the senior housing overlay removal. Just a few short months later, Sage Homes pulls an end, pulls an end run and convinces the Board of Adjustment to give them an illegal variance on the property. Let me tell you what Utah statute says. And I am quoting from the Utah Municipal Code, Title ten, Chapter nine A versus uh, cha, or Section seven oh two. Number one. Any person or entity desiring a waiver or modification of the requirements of a land use ordinance as applied to a parcel of property, not fourteen, a parcel of property. Variances are only done on one parcel of property. You can't do it, you can't do a variance to bypass the setback requirements that were imposed by ordinance by this council. This council passed this approval, passed the approval by ordinance with preliminary development plan. The Board of Adjustment doesn't have the authority to change that setback on fourteen parcels. Let me also further quote. In determining whether or not an enforcement of land use ordinance would cause unreasonable hardship, the appeal authority may not find an unreasonable hardship if the hardship is, with emphasis added, self-imposed or economic. Go back and read the minutes of the, of the Board of Adjustment for this in February of twenty twenty-one. And what Sage Homes co- claimed is, we can't build homes. That's an economic hardship. Board of Adjustment couldn't consider it. Somehow they did. The S H O was a self-imposed condition. Now, let's get to the current ordinance. West Jordan City Code thirteen seventy dash nine says, no variance shall be lo- valid for a period of longer than twelve months unless three conditions apply. Well, the building permits haven't been issued to the other five homes. And construction actually hasn't been begun and then diligently pursued on two other homes. There's been, the certificate of occupancy probably been issued on five homes. And then it says, or unless a longer time is requested and granted by the zoning administrator. The variance expires twelve months unless there's an extension. It's, the extension would have had to have been granted over a year ago in February of twenty twenty or it, it would have had to have been expired or done in February twenty twenty-two. Because it was passed in twenty twenty-one. There's been no extension. Therefore, the variances are improper. They've expired. And unless Liberty wants to put in your development plan that you're gonna follow the current setbacks of R three eight, I will be a no. The other issue with R three eight is R three eight for single-family homes requires four thousand square foot lots. Liberty Homes has three lots that are point zero nine acres. That's less than four thousand square foot lots. So unless the preliminary, unless the development plan readjusts- So unless the preliminary, unless the development plan readjusts the lots to all tenth of an acre, I'm not gonna vote yes for a non-conforming neighborhood where at least three lots don't even meet the minimum lot requirement of the zone. So we've got, and, and, and then by the way, there are five non-conforming houses, and I don't think the resolution actually identifies um, the non-conforming houses that are required by law that, that have to be, be shown. Um, and so, and personally, I'd rather see the tot lot moved up farther east cause the houses that are gonna have problems parking are the four houses along Drake Lane because the, the driveways are so short. But we're gonna make them park two streets down. They're not gonna park down there. They're gonna wanna park on the street. Or they're gonna wanna park on the private lane around the corner. And so uh, I, I mean, you said that you're gonna, and I don't care what they do on the private lane. But we've gotta be able to get the cars off of Drake Lane. Um. And not block that. So the only way that I'm going to, to, that I'm going to vote yes is that the development plan be modified to show that three, the three lots that are point zero nine acres go to point one zero. And that it's stated in the amended development agreement that the R three eight zoning requirements and setbacks will be met. Um, otherwise, I'm a no. And, and then the other requirement is gotta have no parking on both sides of Drake Lane. Thank you.
Other discretion from the council, councilmember Jacob.
Thank you. Um, brilliant legal analysis as always. Thank you. You should be a judge because that's really where that kind of adjudication should take place. Um. I would welcome somebody to file that suit and bring these concerns to a judge. So the judge can decide if the board of adjustment followed the law or not. It's not up to me to decide if the board of adjustment followed the law. It's not up to me to decide if the process was followed. That, that should be taken care of by the staff before it gets to us. I trust their staff to have done that right. If they've done it wrong, somebody will fix, you know, I don't know. Anyway, not, not my place. For me, I'm looking at this as this is either the R three eight S H O that they have or it's R three eight, not S H O that they want. And really, the main difference is who gets to buy the house or who gets to live in it. And that's it. I, I'm, you know, whether cars park on the side of the road or cars park in uh, another little uh, parking lot or cars are prohibited from parking on the side of the road, doesn't have anything to do with how old the person is that lives there. In fact, you could argue that with the S H O, there's gonna be more cars who want to park in places that they shouldn't be because you got older people with older kids who are living with them. I know my, I, it's funny, I got a Christmas card from my wife's cousin today who is forty something years old, and she just had her second kid. She has a three-year-old and a one-year-old. When she's living in an S H O, she's gonna have toddlers. And beyond that, she's gonna have teenagers and beyond that, they're gonna have cars. Um. You know, we got four drivers in my house. I, I don't even qualify for S H O yet. I'm, I'm getting there. Give me six more years. Um. But, but where cars park, how wide the street is, um. Th- these kinds of things are not dependent on, on the age of the person living in the house. It's just not. I think in general, the amendments that are being asked for is, is better than what is in place now with the ex uh, additional parking, the removal of one of the houses. Um, that kinda thing. We don't get, we don't get to tell them, sorry, we don't like what you're proposing and we don't like what you've got. Cause at the end of today, you're either gonna end up with what's there or you're gonna end up with what's being proposed. You're not gonna end up with some magical third option, cause that's not, I mean, unless you wanna buy the property and, and make your application. That's, that's not on the table. So what's on the table is either what they have or what's being proposed. Um, I was, I did vote to not remove the S H O three years ago. That's true. I went back and looked at the notes and I believe I was thinking because the houses weren't built yet and R three gives all kinds of leeway to multifamily and other things that, that I didn't think would have been the right thing. With the five houses that are already built, I'm not worried about an apartment building going in or a high-rise or some other R three monstrosity. So for my two cents, I like what's being proposed better than what's there. I think um, I think the um, the questions or the, the issues that we'll have that, that are being expressed will be there regardless of if you vote yes or no tonight. It's the same issues. So how we got here is, is, is okay, we can talk about that. And if you wanna file a lawsuit that says we didn't get here the right way, then file the lawsuit, but our city attorneys are gonna defend the city's actions, not join you. Right? Because that's their job. They're hired to defend the city. Um. So whether it's, whether it's right or wrong, we got here the wrong way or whatever. I guess that's debatable and that's something that we can talk about, but at the end of the day, we have a choice between what's being proposed and what's already there. And the difference is how old the homeowner has to be. I, I don't like arbitrary things like, oh, if you're fifty-five, you can live there, but if you're fifty-four and six months, sorry. Wait six months, then come by the house. I don't like arbitrary deadlines like that. I'd rather open it up. Um, anyway, my two cents, I think uh, I think I'd be in favor of this. I think what's being proposed is better than what's there, regardless of what could have been there.
We'll go to councilmember Whitlock, then councilmember Bennett.
So I would just state that this is an opportunity that we can work with the developer to not only take senior housing over, but to have a better product. So I don't think it's an either or. I don't think it's either we have the senior housing overlay or we don't. I think that we could work for a better end product for those that share that lane. And that would be my choice is to figure out a way that we can work for a better end product. And I don't think we're quite there yet. I'm concerned about parking. And I was when it was proposed, so that hasn't changed.
Thank you, councilmember Bennett.
Thank you, Chair. Um, this is a question for staff. It's probably for the city attorney. Um, is there a way that we could create a motion that would approve the recommended rezone, but also somehow refer the parking issue either back to staff or through the planning commission? Or some way that we could uh, put a little bit more responsibility on solving the parking problem uh, conditional uh, before we move forward on the additional property that is wanting to be developed?
Yeah, I'm gonna look to Mr. Murray for an answer to that question.
There's two ordinances before you write. One is the amended development plan. The other one is the zone change. Typically, um, well, state law requires and municipal code and state code um, that you have to have something specific in front of you to be able to vote on, right? If it's a matter of a few words that you're adding in and we clarify on the record what those additional words are, amending the ordinances in front of you, that's okay. When it's something more substantial like this, where you're, you're waiting to see some little issue or two worked out, then that language really needs to be fleshed out first and then maybe brought back. I, it, it appears to me that maybe you're close enough, but you still need to, under state law, be voting on something with very clear language so that you know exactly what you're voting on. So uh, this is probably a case where um, if you feel like you're close, um, then I would recommend that you have that worked out and come back to you at a, at a later point in time.
So would this be a motion to refer to?
I, I don't think you necessarily need to uh,
postpone?
You could just postpone it, right? It, it's not significant enough that you'd have to uh, refer or remand. You could simply just continue it to be able to have that language specifically set forth that you could actually vote on.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Pack.
Well, I'll uh, I'll defer to councilmember Green. He was, or, or if you're saying everyone.
Robert's rules should allow everybody to speak first before somebody can speak second.
Yep.
Thank you. Didn't, didn't wanna jump in there inappropriately. Thank you. So a couple more questions for staff, if I may. I, I believe, unless I was mistaken on the presentation, is this area mandated to use the garage for parking? That's what I thought, cause, cause you're counting the extra spaces w- w- with the, with the garage in the overall, the thirty-five spaces. Okay, ye- yes, please. I just wanted to make sure that I did not, sorry, no, we have to, sorry, we can't do that. But ju- just asking uh, staff to, to clarify that. The parking issue. I know we just have attorneys. I think the, we've got Scott Langford, but uh, I don't think the planners are present.
Everybody loves to hear from attorneys. So I, my understanding of it, after looking through the documents, is that the limitation on driveway parking was due to the limited setback on those six or so homes that, that are initially built. Um, that, that those are required to, to park in the garage. I, originally, I think it was anticipated that every vehicle would park in the garage because of the short driveway. Um, I think the proposal, as I understand it, is that with the longer driveway, with the increased front setback, that, that there would be driveway parking on the new construction, but not the existing construction. That's my
New construction, not existing.
But, but yes, you're right. There is a, a limitation that I did see on driveway parking with the short setback so that vehicles didn't hang out into the uh, sidewalk or, or into the road.
Thank you very much for the clarification, which is one of our pet peeves. I know that we've addressed ever since I've been on planning commission. I'm trying to ensure that driveways are long enough to have a Ford F one fifteen. So thank you. Because as we know, it's the great American way to use the garage for storage, right? It's not for cars. It's for storage usually, right? And I know I'm an offender of that uh, of that too. That's, that's right. It's right next to a storage unit. Um, so the comments that I'd like to make then is, well, first of all, I know the area quite well. I've even bought soap from Mrs. Drake, gone down the road many times. And I drive by on Redwood Road uh, quite often. And I again, always want to see what planning commission has to say on it. Interesting to have that split vote, three to four on the rezone and the amended development plan. And I always try to get more, more information, not only on just who cast the dissenting votes, but also the, the details on what exactly the planning commission had issue with. So I, I know I've mentioned that, that it would be nice in the future if we can have a little bit more uh, detail on, on the minutes. Um, but if we can resolve, if not we, if, if the developer can resolve the concerns that caused the dissenting vote, which I would assume is parking um, and other areas that have been articulated, then we could mitigate those, those problems. I, I feel on the senior housing overlay, obviously a concession was given to have that. And if a reciprocal differential concession can be given back, well, that, then we're good. I guess the issue is what is being given back? Do we fill a tot lot and some additional parking units are good? I'm grateful that the top proposed tot lot is far away from Redwood Road and that the parking is adjacent to uh, the Drake Farm instead of having a house right up uh, against their established dwelling. I know where I live, my house abuts a park and I don't know why the tot lot was put right up against the main thoroughfare street. Seems like that should have been tucked away more. Um, great comment, councilmember Green. I was wondering the same thing, you know, board of adjustment, they granted the variance of the setback. I don't know if we would consider that illegal, non-conforming, or we have a juxtaposition of, of who can do what. Um. This is a great opportunity to have homes that are adjacent to a school that's established. I was also thinking, as councilmember Jacob had mentioned, it doesn't necessarily equate having fewer trips up and down the road or fewer people residing in a house just because of a, an arbitrary age. Um, I do agree if, if on-street parking can be red-curved on the south side, that would make a difference, wanting to be respectful for the Drakes to be able to get large trucks down the road to service their farm while also noting that everyone else should have an equal opportunity to have access to the road. Interesting having Mr. Murray state that if requested, the timeline could be continued by the zoning administrator, even though it is expired. So I'm feeling that we could have, as we've done in the past, have conditions of approval for this. Um, I appreciate councilmember Whitlock's idea to think outside the box on a third option, but I think what's tendered before us tonight is option A or option B, but we can massage that with conditions of approval. If we've got yard, larger yard areas, you can park a Ford F one ten, three-car garages, longer driveways, the tot lot. Tot lots away from Redwood Road, um, the additional parkings by Drake, Drake home, the parking lots. I'm not quite uh, sure about what was inferred by a constant stream of traffic that was Mr. Drake's concern. I'm not discounting his concern, uh, just trying to ensure that I understand why a constant stream of traffic would be thought. Um, but I'm grateful for the expression of gratitude for what has been done, the fencing, the cuts in the curb. So I think all things considered, if a concession was made and then a concession is given back, that it's amenable to work itself out. So provided that we can, as was suggested, have uh, some conditions of approval, which is my terminology, not, not yours, councilmember Bennett, but I think it's on the same, same idea. Um, I'm amenable to lifting the senior housing overlay. Thank you.
So real quick, um, my two cents, same thing I said previously. If the planning commission fails to provide a positive recommendation, I think our process needs to change a little bit so that it's more clear if the applicant wishes to proceed on to city council or if they'd like to stay and come back to the planning commission again to get their clear approval, rather than saying, yeah, planning commission brought these issues. We've addressed them. Here you go. I'd still like to hear that from the planning commissions on voice, councilmember Green.
So where I'm gonna disagree with councilmember Jacob is that we don't have two options. We have three. Keep in mind that what we have in front of us is the removal of the senior housing overlay and that we also have the um, amending the, the development plan. The amendment of the development plan, so let, let me just address the, the, a couple of things. The development plan specifically shows that the detention pond is no longer in the development plan. There's gotta be some sort of agreement there or something so that the, the wat- the detention water can be there. Otherwise, what we're saying is the detention plant pit, detention pond is no longer part of the development plan. We don't care. And then when the houses get flooded because Gary did something on the land, then we're stuck. You can see where I'm going with this, the, and, and so we have to, we have to figure that one out. Number two, number two, number two, and I agree with councilmember Pack. We made concessions to zone this R three eight senior housing overlay. There can be some concessions back. And the concessions back is that we will follow the zone of R three eight. And that is four thousand square foot lots with the setback set by the city. If we approve the development plan the way it is, and by the way, I believe whether the variance was approved improperly or not, the variance has expired under city code. Because it, it expires in twelve months unless the zoning adminis- administrator's given the, extended it. Uh, I'm sitting back here. I bet Larry has, I bet Mr. Gardner hasn't extended the, 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 he's the zoning administrator and I'll bet he hasn't um, extended the variance. And so the, the variance is expired. But the way, the way the preliminary development plan is drawn up, it specifically says we want, it says that the setbacks are gonna be on the ver- variance set by the, the board of adjustment. We can have that struck in the development plan and go back and say, part of the development plan includes following R three eight. And I think that's the concession, that's one of the, you know, the, the concessions that we get back. Because R one eight was ten homes, approximately, give or take. They're getting thirteen out of this. The concession, the concession is to go to R three eight, that they can follow the minimum zone of four thousand square foot lots. And if that means that you have to resurvey a couple of lots and add four hundred square feet, four hundred and fifty square feet from the, the ones that are point one two to the ones that are point oh nine, I'm okay with that. Refile a new plat with the planning commission. I just want the, what I don't want to do is pass an R three eight zone that every lot in the subdivision is non-conforming to the zone. Yes, we have six. Yes, we have five or six. There will be a question on whether the two houses have met the code with the variance because they, uh, because they have, they haven't. they have, they haven't, they got the building permit, but they haven't proceeded with the building and nobody asked for an extension on the variance. So there's a question on those two buildings. The other five, they're locked in. But the other ones that aren't built need to comply with the zone. And that, I, I mean, I don't think it's that difficult as a council to require a developer to build homes in a zone that complies with the zone. I just don't think that's unreasonable. And, 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 and so that's, I'm, I'm actually leaning. You know, and I'm gonna make the motion and then we'll go, we'll go with it. I move that we postpone ordinance number twenty-three forty-two. A petition for a rezone for two-point-one-seven acres at Cottage Cottage Place and ordinance number twenty-three forty-three, amending the Cottage at Parker Place Plan Development. Um, I move to postpone that for a hundred and, to, to be brought back to the council no later than a hundred and twenty days.
Second.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilmember Green. I'll give the second to Councilmember Whitelock. I'm guessing she went for the button before Councilmember Bloom. Any discussion to the motion? Councilmember Jacob.
I'll go ahead and vote in favor of this, just because it gives everybody a chance to give it one more look, just like I did on the last one. Um, I don't, I don't think we're, I don't think that they're that far apart. I think, you know, I think this could be, uh, massaged and whatever to address the concerns that have been brought up. Again, I don't have those concerns, but, um, but I'll be okay with the, uh, with the, with giving it a couple more, uh, weeks to massage it. Give it, give it a, another go.
Councilmember Pack. Thank you. And to clarify, you said no later than one hundred and twenty days, Councilmember Green? Right, thank you. And I think it would be.
I think four months is reasonable.
Right, and I think they could turn that around quicker than that.
I, I, but I, I think four months.
At least it gives them adequate time. And so, to ensure I understand the motion, then are you, you didn't apply any conditions of approval. Just curious if you want to friendly articulate anything that you want to see the developer do.
What I'm saying is, I wanna see this postponed and hopefully the developer will take back some of the information and, uh, and tweak the mat, the development plan to, to deal with making the development compliant with the R-three-eight. That's, that's what I, that's what I'm seeking, is I'm hoping that the developer will, I, I mean, I wanna get to yes, but I wanna get to yes the right way.
And to just clarify then, the main concern are the three lots at point zero nine acres go to point one-zero instead of having a couple that are point one-two and a couple that are point zero nine. Just so I understand.
Point zero nine and the setbacks.
I would, I would also suggest that if additional inform, or if additional conversation is needed or additional details needed, that within that hundred and twenty days, there are a couple, uh, council work sessions where this could potentially be discussed. Councilmember Jacob.
I just had one, uh, question for Councilmember Green. Would you be okay approving the zone and not the development agreement? It is two separate ordinances that are on the agenda. Yeah, I could, I could, I could agree to, um, vote for the rezone and not the development plan and just postpone the development plan until it can be worked.
Is that something that we can do from a procedural point of view with legal?
I don't know that there's a procedural obstacle to it. I think that it's maybe an unwise order of operations on this to consider those separately. I think they go hand in hand.
Okay, just a thought.
Councilmember Pack.
Thank you. A concern that I have, unless I'm misunderstanding, just to clarify the motion then, is I believe that the developer purchased property where they can't necessarily meet the setback. Even in a rework of the architecture.
The, the setback, the setbacks were given to them by the Board of Adjustment because they thought, I'm not sure that, that it was ever a requirement, um, I think it was a self-imposed requirement, that the homes had to be single fa- that had to be one-level Rambler-style homes. The, the developer right now is proposing two-story homes. And the two-story homes probably could fit without the setbacks of the variance. And we need to at least look at that.
So, I, I'm going to interject just out of, out of concern for the hour, make sure that, I'd like to make sure that discussion that we have now is to the particular motion to delay for a hundred and twenty, no, more than a hundred and twenty days. Um, and, and if we could keep discussion to that motion. I'm not seeing any other lights, therefore I would look to Ms. Quick for a vote. We can't, because there's electronic and that there's a dissent, we'd have to do it again, so it's quicker just to do it. Roll call.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bloom?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Pack?
Yes.
Chair McConaughey?
No.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
I show that motion passes six to one.
I was, I was.
Thank you.
All right. That moves us on to consent items, which are minutes from other meetings.
Who do approve consent?
Motion by Councilmember Green, two seconds by Councilmember Bloom, uh, Ms. Quick? Actually, this, well, yeah.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Hi.
Councilmember Pack?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Chair McConaughey?
Hi.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Uh, before we hit council meeting wrap-up, I do want to again go back to the item that I mentioned earlier. Uh, Mr. Anderson pointed out that we've been trying to work with a resident who does not have computer access to meetings, rather only has telephone, and we, we've been having issues connecting with them. So, uh, would there be an objection from the council to suspend the rules and allow us to reopen citizen comment? Not seen any objections, therefore I will reopen citizen comment. Mr. Anderson, can you remind me, was it start, what, what was the button combination for those who are participating by phone?
Uh, the way that she's in this evening, you just need to unmute her and she'll receive, um.
Beautiful.
Ability.
All right, so Ms. Framo, if you'd like to speak for citizen comment, I'm going to open it for you now. Let's see, it says it's still asking me to have her unmute, so I think she still needs to push the, the key combination.
Star, star six, star nine?
Yes, I don't remember which of the two it was. Can we jump on the slides back to the public hearing? Sorry, Ms. Framo, we're getting that key combo for you. Oops. There we go. You can press star six and you should be able to speak. So Ms. Framo, if you would like to speak during citizen comment, we've reopened that for you. Please press star six on your phone. Give a moment or two here. We've had to, w- we, we've had staff go to incredible lengths to try and make sure every member of the public who wants to participate and share their thoughts can. So Ms. Framo would just give you another moment, star six to share your thoughts. If there's anybody else who's online who would like to speak, this is open for everybody, uh, to speak. You can't speak. If you've already spoken about a public hearing, um, you can't speak on that same topic again. But if you'd like to speak during citizen comments and you're online, please hit the button to raise hands, indicate you'd like to do so. Or if you're here in chambers and would like to, you're welcome to come to the microphone.
Chad's gonna.
Mr. Lamb, are you working towards the microphone or no? All right. Well, we will, we've gone to extreme lengths to try and make sure everyone can speak, even though it wasn't, uh, taken advantage of. But we will, uh, close citizen comment. I will note for the record that Councilmember Whitelock has, uh, left as well. Uh, she had noted that she was gonna leave after, after the, um, consent items. There are no, um, administrative items I have on my side, so we'll turn to council remarks. And then we'll go to, uh, or, uh, we'll have, sorry, council remarks, then the recognition for departing members, and then a chance for those departing members to speak. So we'll start with Councilmember Green.
So I, I would suspect that this is the time when, uh, the council members can talk to the departing council members and say, thank you for your service. Uh, thank you for your friend.
Oh, and there.
I'll pod.
There we go. Ms. Framo, can you hear us okay?
No. I'm, I'll talk next time. It's late. It's ten o'clock. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, everybody. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Alexandra. So good to hear from you. Uh, we wish you the best.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay, she, I do have the ability.
I do have the ability.
All right, so Councilmember Green.
Once again, uh, to, uh, Councilmember Pack, Councilmember McConaughey, Councilmember Bennett, thank you for, uh, your service. Noni, you put up with a lot. Um, so thank you for, for you being here with your, uh, children tonight. And, um, Chris, your mom as well, for putting up with us tonight and, uh, so that they could spend the time um, with you on your last meeting. Uh, it's been a pleasure to serve with all three of you and, um, uh, appreciate that the friendships that, uh, that we ha- have had. And, uh, once again, just, uh, thank you for your service and, uh, best wishes in the future.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Councilmember Jacob.
Sure, I'll chime in. Uh, if, if any of the three of you are anything like Councilmember Lamb, we haven't seen the last of you. So, uh, thank you, obviously. Thank you to David for being my seatmate for the last couple of years. And gosh, three years on the Planning Commission. We've served side by side for eleven years, sort of, one way or another. Um, it's been a long time and it's been, it's been good to get to know you and, and to, uh, bounce ideas back and forth. And, and that's been great. And Chris, for the, uh, for the support and friendship and mentorship and, uh, leadership and providing a, uh, a sense of continuity over twelve freaking years. I can't believe I'm gonna be here for that long. Um, I, I don't know, I don't know what I was thinking, but, uh, I don't know what you were thinking either. And I, I think I mentioned that four years ago. What are you thinking? And here I am doing the same thing, so, um, yeah, don't, don't go far. You'll, you'll still be around too. And Rob, thanks for pinch hitting for us for, uh, a month. Appreciate you stepping in and taking some slings and, uh, and, uh, you know, getting a couple of base hits. I appreciate the, uh, the, uh, the, the willingness to step up. It's, uh, it's always good when somebody's willing to volunteer. And we've got a lot of opportunities, continue to serve in the city. So, uh, yeah, don't go far. Thanks to all three. And Melissa, if she's still paying attention, yada, yada, you too.
Councilmember Bloom.
Uh, thanks for coming in on these last couple of meetings, especially tonight. We really needed your insight and your vote and appreciate, appreciate you being here and, and being there for the citizens of our, of our wonderful city. Um, thanks for being a seatmate and offering tissues and food and tears and everything else next to me. And it's been good texting you and calling you and feeding off of ideas, and I appreciate that. I really do. And thank you for letting me be your VP, or, I'm sorry, Vice Chair. I know. Um, and I appreciate your absolute passion for what you do and, and what you do to the city and your adorable kids coming up and being a part of it. And thank you.
All right, not seeing any other lights, therefore we'll move on to the awkward recognition portion.
I hope it'll be a little more lively. So I'm gonna start with the shortest term to the longest term. And with the great research of the council staff, Councilmember Rob Bennett. Great research. I want you to know that you are not the shortest-tenured elected official in the United States of America. Our vast research of the council office that took months to do for your one month in office is that there are five US senators from eighteen-seventy-one to nineteen-seventy-five that served less time than you. There's five United States representatives, um, from eighteen-sixty-seven to nineteen-forty-one that served less time than you. There's one US president, President Harrison, the ninth President of the United States, who served one day less than you. Also territorial governor of Utah, uh, Mr. Dawson, who was appointed by Abe Lincoln in eighteen-sixty-one, uh, in October. And he arrived in Utah in December, couldn't put up with the Mormons and left three weeks later. You served longer than him. So, with that vast research, I have a couple gifts for you. Uh, this card that has been signed by members of the council, um, I have to read the front, cause it's, it, it fits. Uh, not everyone can do what you do. So I've got this card as a, a token and some, uh, chocolate that I'd like to give to you on behalf of the council staff, on behalf of the city staff and the mayor's staff, on behalf of the city of West Jordan, uh, for filling in for thirty-two days and serving the residents of District Two, um, the emails that you've sent to constituents that I'm aware of, uh, the conversations you mentioned tonight, how you drove, um, that's what council members do. So, I also, oh, I forgot about this. I forgot about this.
Can I say where's the sign, Alan?
Yeah, yeah. Bennett Boulevard.
Oh, yes, you are.
If you consider your prior time, maybe not consecutive service, but.
It, it fits. Uh, so thank you, December twenty-twenty-three. So, I'll give these to you. Okay, next, Councilmember Pack. Um, it's gonna get harder as I go down this road. Um, seven years ago, you were in council chambers with me and the then-council, which two members here were on, um, had a three-three vote for you and a three-three vote for me. And we did the first coin toss in, uh, West Jordan history and the coin landed. And I remember Melanie Bregg saying, congratulations, Councilmember Anderson, but we had already chatted that no matter how the coin tossed, uh, we would respect each other and support the winner. And I, uh, you did. And I have. So, with that, I had a little fun with you too, cause this needs to be a joyous time, so I'm gonna try and not cry. So I wanted to play on words. Pack place. It's like Park Place, but it's Pack Place. One of the best places on the Monopoly board. So I got that for you. Can you hold that for me, Bob? Also, also, this, oh, I do, I forgot the right one. This, uh, signature mat has been touring the city of West Jordan for two weeks. It's hit every department, Public Works, Public Utilities, Police, Fire, Administration, um, it's made a big tour and I had to actually leave the meeting today because when I was putting the mat in, I broke the glass. So I raced back to City Hall while you were having your public hearing, grabbed another one. My staff was able to keep the meeting going even upstairs with IT. And, uh, I got another piece of glass. I won't say from where, Mayor. No, I didn't. No, I hit, it's, it's safe. It's, building is secure. Um, for you to, uh, to hang and remember your service on the city council. Um, I appreciate your friendship, being a neighbor. Um, and I just wanna thank, oh, I got one more thing. I'm not done. All right, so let me, uh, the other one I have to do is use two hands.
Councilmember Alex are useful for it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, and I didn't show the back. You gotta show the back. No, the other side. That's the front. January twenty-twenty, December twenty-three.
People online, it's, uh, the back says, uh, thank you, January twenty-twenty, December twenty-three. People online, it's the, the back says, uh, thank you, January twenty twenty, December twenty-three. Public Works and Brian's team have autographed a hard hat uh, to present to you. So you're gonna make multiple trips when you leave here today. Move forward and elevate. Councilmember McConaughey. Your family's here, your boys are here, your wife is here, your mother's here. We heard so much about your mom and your wife and your boys at council meeting. I got to know you sitting on the council. And back then, um, the at-large sat in the middle, mayor sat in center. And I always had the end seat, District Four end seat where David sits. And you were always over here on District One, because it was one, two, three, four. And I remember, and I've shared this with you before numerous times, that I could look at you and we would talk with our eyes. And we would know kind of what each other's thinking. We could kind of play off each other's comments and I felt at one with you on the council for the three years that I served. I appreciate the support you've given me, being the council director for the last four years. If you can believe that, I've been here four years now. We, we are a master at Zoom and broadcasting to the residents because of you and the first year you were chair when COVID hit. And we lead and I have talked to numerous other cities about how we do what we do because West Jordan leads in council meetings. You saw a sam, example of that tonight. We tested the courtroom last night to make sure Zoom worked. Last night, we tested the court because court was in session. And IT was more than supportive, the mayor's staff to make the uh, courtroom be an overflow. We had as many as forty up there this evening. When the public hearing ended, we had twenty-six and twenty-six of them were West Jordan High School students, your alma mater. It's only fitting that uh, your last year, you're the chair of the council. So I have stuff for you, but the elves have told me that you took your Public Works hard hat early. So I don't know if you're on the naughty list or the nice list. But I don't have a hard hat for you, but you've already got it. So I have a straight sign for Brian, McConaughey Way. There's the right way, then there's McConaughey Way. That's right. And then on the backside, uh, thank you, you've, you've served from January twenty-twelve to December twenty-three, twelve years of service to the city of West Jordan. You've left an indelible mark on the city. And uh, it's just a pleasure serving with you and I'm looking forward to the new council as well. They're, they're here. The three of them, yep, they're all here. Getting ramped up and uh, to the rest of the council, we'll see you next year. Um, and wait, do I have anything? No. Oh, yeah, 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 whoa. This is gonna sound very familiar. This signature mat has been passed around the last two weeks around the city, fire station, fire department, police station, um, Public Works, Public Utilities, City Hall. Signed by a lot of people that you've touched and worked with as you've made the city better. So this glass didn't break when I was putting it together. But uh, it's a pleasure to work with you and I hope to work with you again. And that, thank you all. Before I turn the floor back over to you, Chair, I think it's only fitting um that your wife know how appreciative the council is for you and the time that she gives to allow you to be here and share your time with us. You have an amazing wife, amazing boys and a super amazing mom who's videoing this for posterity and for Chris. And this is on YouTube, it'll be on YouTube tomorrow for uh, for the McConaughey's children's great-great-grandchildren. It'll be in perpetuity because it's a public meeting. Thank you, Chair. I turn the sign back to you.
Chris, I've noticed you've taught her the right way to video.
Yes, none of this.
All right, well, we have a moment now for uh, final, so it doesn't seem like the uh, right word, but departing comments or departing remarks from Alquinn council members. We'll start with uh, Councilmember Bennett.
Well, since my time is so brief, I'll be brief. We get to sit here and observe what I personally consider to be the greatest gift to the world that we live in. Not just West Jordan, not just the United States, but the entire world is the peaceful transference of power. Where new representation comes on board and the previous representative stepped down and there are no lives lost. There are no damages been done. People accept and move on. And we have the opportunity to do this every two years. And we get to meet our new elected representatives. And I'll tell you, being an appointed representative, I don't deserve this stuff. But you guys have given everything. Mayor, you and your staff have made West Jordan the best place to live in the entire state of Utah. All of us have the opportunity to be part of our community and I hope to see all of you in different capacities as time goes by. And I will be working side by side with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pack.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for humanizing the meeting tonight, having your thumbs up here on your lap. Fantastic. It's about family, faith, community. We can have a professional meeting and still be family oriented. And these accolades and gifts greatly appreciated, certainly not expected. And you're right, Mr. Anderson, um, I, I remember that night of the coin flip, coming up to you and just giving you a hug, saying congratulations. I truly believe God is even in the coin flips, certain things that you had to accomplish during that time and, and now you have your position here. So thank you, friends. What an incredible journey and opportunity to sit in council with all of you for many years, uh, learning from everyone's unique perspectives and experience. I believe West Jordan's better for our collaborative efforts, especially when we uh, started with a global pandemic, a month into, a month or two into our service and then mass riots and calls to defund the police. And I'm grateful that we increased funding for public safety while simultaneously creating a diversity committee to be sensitive to whole demographic needs. And it's interesting how it seems to me that we're always one decision away from a vastly different life. In winter of two thousand eight, then council member Melissa Johnson asked me to serve for one year on a general plan committee. Three years later, we wrapped that up. And uh, while wrapping it up, Tom Burdette said, hey, we'd love for you to serve on this board of adjustment. I said, what's a board of adjustment? What are we adjusting? Never even heard of that. And, and then that led into design review committee in Western Stampede and, and visioning committee and economic development and all other kinds of service. That wasn't necessarily by design, a little bit by default, but grateful to give back and, and then uh, Councilmember Jacob, I believe, uh, your second year of being nominated to be Vice Chair of Planning Commission, no one else was nominated. So you very altruistically said that you are opposed to non-opposed elections and nominated me and I ended up winning.
I don't think that anymore, by the way.
And I thought that was very altruistic and, and then you, you ended up being on city council very shortly thereafter, but then that was a transition for me, being Vice Chair for two years and Chair for two years. During which time many people asked, well, why don't you run for city council? And I said, well, we've had great people in office, Lyle Summers, then Justin Stoker, then Sophie Rice, then Alan Anderson. And I believe the first rule that we learned, uh, Mr. Anderson and our mutual master of public administration degree is, you know, why fire an incumbent if, uh, if he's doing a good job? And they said, I don't wanna run against a friend. That was just me personally, not saying that that needs to be everybody's philosophy. Um, with experience and institutional knowledge. Uh, so when ma, Mr. Anderson ran for mayor, I thought, well, okay. And then that's where I met Councilmember Bloom. And I want to thank you publicly as I have uh, privately for what an amicable campaign we had. We never said anything besmirching about each other, which allows us to sit side by side here. And the worst thing that we argue about is whether a steak should be cooked medium rare or medium well. Think, I think that's uh, okay, okay, well, we'll, we'll, we'll leave it at that, so. Oh, but, but honestly, my service was never about me. I appreciate that staff wanted to organize an outgoing reception for us. But I realize this is a temp job. Whether four years or eight years, really, uh, didn't matter. What an honor to be here. And it's a temp job belonging to the community, not me and for our freedom of democracy. I'm reminded by a, a quote from Bill Buckley when he won the New York City mayoral race in nineteen sixty-five. He was asked, what's the first thing you'll do if you win? And he said, I'll demand a recount. Sometimes the only thing worse than losing can be winning sometimes. So uh, it's interesting how people have an inherent distrust of government sometimes and how I've been looked at differently, being an elected official. Um, I wish all of the incoming council members good luck because I know you're good people as well. Um, it's interesting how we're looked at differently, but having been on the inside out, I'd love the public to know that we're blessed with incredibly dedicated, intelligent, committed, capable employees with vast institutional knowledge. And it's worth retaining good people and trying to re, obtain someone new. It saves us money in the long run. Um, it's been an honor going on ride-alongs with police, fire, EMT, snowplows and meeting our great uh, citizens and employees uh, in many different uh, locations of the city. So I stand by what I said four years ago, that I never wanted to do anything politically expedient personally. I'm just grateful to serve, grateful I've been able to be here at every meeting and hold open house town hall meetings and vote according to that input that I receive and not revile against revilers, because it's interesting, I think all of us could uh, attest to this, that there's always people that'll question your motives. There'll always be people um, that are detractors. Um, but I believe that if we ask questions instead of judging, it's it's better. And I don't think that we have any ulterior motives up here. We're just the same people living in the same neighborhoods as everyone else, paying the same taxes and utilities that we end up voting on. Um, so may I invite all of us, um, myself included, to consider future discussions of affordable economic business development and and housing initiatives, code enforcement application to ensure better relations between neighbors, uh, perhaps codifying nonpartisan elections, providing services to residents who might not have equipment or finances to adhere to city code such as with tree trimming height, uh, so that we can continue an upward trend to truly have governments of the people by the people, for the people, to make it a user-friendly community, to continue being the home of the good neighbor. So thank you again for the honor of serving together and as we state in the pledge of allegiance that we recite each night that we're one nation under God, I do pray that God will sustain all of you and your families and your continued efforts to serve as elected officials, appointed volunteers, hired city staff for our safety and well-being. So in other words, may God bless America and the city of West Jordan. Thank you.
Kind of funny, twelve years, um, really doesn't seem like that long, but then at the same time, it seems like so much longer. When I started here on this, well, tonight, I've got all five of my little boys here with me. Five, four of them are still awake, way past their bedtime. My incredible wife, who has put up so much to allow me to serve in this capacity. And my mom, who has put up with me for a very long time. Yeah, lots changed. I, when I started here, Noni and I didn't have any kids. Still have my dad, still had three of my four grandparents. Now all of my grandparents are gone, dad's gone. But the city continues to move forward. Um, life here continues to move forward and things continue to improve and get better. We're constantly finding ways that we can improve the quality of life here in West Jordan. And it's been a privilege to sit here with so many people who have that same goal and that same desire. Uh, Councilmember Worthen would always end with a shout out and I, I kinda wanna take her model for this little bit and uh, give a thank you to those who I've served with. First of all, uh, Clive Kilpak, he was one who planted the seed for this crazy idea to try and serve in the capacity of a city council member. So um, for those who are frustrated with some of the things I voted, some of the ways I voted, uh, please blame Clive. He's the one who started it. But uh, Clive Kilpak, uh, opportunity to serve with Ben Southworth and Chad Nichols, Mayor Melissa Johnson, Judy Hanson, Justin Stoker. There was Jeff Haga, uh, Kim Rolfe, Councilmember Burton. Uh, Zach Jacob joined in and served with Sophie Rice and I got to serve with Chad Lamb, Kailene Whitlock. As was mentioned earlier, Councilmember Alan Anderson for a time, uh, Mayor Jim Riding, Councilmember Green, Councilmember Melissa Worthen, David Pack, uh, Pamela Bloom and Rob Bennett. It's been a very learning experience and I've taken away much from everybody who I've had the opportunity to serve with and very much appreciate the friendship, the opportunity to share thoughts, the opportunity to learn from each other. I would be remiss without expressing my appreciation to the city staff. One of the things I didn't understand before coming to the city council is how much work goes into um, supporting the quality of life we have in here in West Jordan that nobody sees, nobody notices. Police and fire are first and foremost in people's minds. They're, they're very visible. But when they need help, who do they call? Well, they call Public Works. Uh, just ask Public Works. Uh, without stormwater, without sewer, without uh, I mean, GIS, you've got finance, you've got uh, treasury, you've got all these different groups, engineering. We wouldn't have anything without them. Uh, I can't tell you, I mean, most tonight's meeting has been planning. There's so much that goes on behind the scenes from staff that the average residents don't see and I really appreciate how much they do. I'm not gonna name many of them by name because if I were to do that, I would need to name each one that I've had an opportunity to work with and I don't think Apollo Burger is going to be up in that, uh, long enough to accommodate that, that full list. There's so many both current and retired that the residents are dead of appreciation to. There've been a lot of fun things that we've been able to accomplish during my time here. Again, the list of high, the, the list is very, very long, but some of the highlights include the commencement of the Big Bend Restoration, which, which I could be here to see it, the completion, but this one has taken a full twelve years. Uh, we completed the Jordan River Trail at Ninety South. That was the last part that needed to be completed with the underpass there. We've added, we've constructed the Sierra Newble Playground. We've completed the construction of a fire station, Station Fifty-four. Stormwater improvements on Seventy South, neighborhoods were flooding and that was a multi-year, multi-million dollar project to help fix that. One of, one of the things I was most proud about, believe it or not, was helping the council see the need and agree on funding for a VAC truck for stormwater. They had been using this, the VAC truck by wastewater, by sewer department. And it was nice to be able to uh, help everybody see the need to fund that and then a camera truck for both sewer and stormwater. Uh, this last budget, we approved additional tools for GIS with the drone that are going to yield credible amounts of data that help um, save money and provide better efficiencies. We've upgraded the streetlights to LED. One of the things I got wrong was reconstruction of the park here, um, behind uh, behind City Hall. We redid the Wild West Playground and I was a holdout on that. I know one particular council member was really pushing for that and I stalled because I was very concerned about how that would be done and boy, that couldn't have been done better. Uh, we went through the change in form of government. We've had greater uh, public participation than we ever have before by introducing the Zoom meetings and then we've got the remodel of City Hall. There's still a lot that needs to be done. We have the rodeo arena. We have the home for the community arts. We have that utility transfer fund that I'd like to see adjusted. A lot of things left to do, but there are very capable hands left to do those. And I, I'm very pleased to report to the residents that all three council member elects have been here at every meeting well before the election. every meeting well before the election was finalized. Councilmember Shelton, Councilmember Bedore, so excited, Councilmember Lamb, for you to take my spot. The residents are in very, very good hands and ultimately I want to thank the residents, thank the voters for the trust that they've given to me to serve as their representative for this time. There's a lot of good that's happened. There's a lot of good that's still yet to come. There are a lot of corrective steps we need to take, but overall, we're going the right way and I very much am humbled by that trust the voters gave me for this season. It's been a pleasure to serve and I look forward to serving in additional capacities over the years. With that, look for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Sorry, I was thinking, Jacob, but we have a motion. We have a second. Cindy, could you take us through a roll call vote?
Councilmember Jacob.
I will pick up the tradition started by Councilmember McConaughey. That when it's one of these occasions, and don't everybody follow along because I don't want to be here anymore. And as somebody who's going to be the senior council member for the first time ever at the very next meeting and I'm not ready for that. I'll say no.
Councilmember Pack.
Yes, so that Chair McConaughey can get to Apollo Burger.
Councilmember Bennett.
I guess so.
Vice Chair Bloom.
Aye.
Councilmember Whitlock. Oh, she's gone. Councilmember Green.
So I can vote no and then we still have a majority.
And Chair McConaughey.
I very much appreciate serving with everyone. I'm not looking forward to ending this time, so I will say no.
Oh, no, that's a tie.
Does that mean we have to go to coin toss?
I will make an additional motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jacob, second by Councilmember Bloom. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Stand adjourned.